Good morning, councillors. I'm councillor Stuart Dark, chairman of Norfolk County Council. I would like to welcome you all to the council meeting and quickly go over some general housekeeping. This meeting is being held in person at County Hall and is also being streamed live on the County Council's YouTube channel. The recording will be also available to view afterwards. A fire alarm test is not expected during this meeting. If the alarms sound, we must evacuate County Hall. In the event of an emergency, please make your way to the nearest exit and meet at the muster point located in the main car park. A word about microphones. When using your microphone, please make sure that it is switched on and speak towards it. This will tell the cameras to focus on you and ensure you can be heard on the live stream. When you have finished speaking, please push the button to turn off your microphone as this will allow the system to move on to and pick up the next speaker. If you need to leave the meeting early, could you please also remove your card and leave it on your desk so that the AV system can see that you are no longer in the meeting? It would be very helpful if councillors, you could indicate clearly if you wish to speak by raising your hand high. Please switch off your microphone when you have finished. For those of you who may have just joined us, I'm councillor Stuart Dark, chairman of Norfolk County Council. Welcome to this meeting of Norfolk County Council today, Tuesday the 18th of February 2025. We start our meeting as always with prayers. I would like to welcome our chaplain, the Reverend Albert Cadmore, to our meeting and ask him to begin today's proceedings by calling upon him for prayers.
Almighty God, we come to you again today, asking for your guidance and inspiration as we gather for this council meeting. Help all to engage in meaningful discussion, guide us in the ways of truth, tolerance, wisdom and integrity, and keep us ever mindful of the needs of the people and communities that we seek to serve. We pray in your name. Amen.
We can now move on to those who have given their apologies for this meeting. I would ask Elaine Tinstall, committee officer, to give the apologies.
Thank you, Chair. We've got apologies today from councillor Stephen Accarone, councillor Alison Birmingham, councillor Jim Moriarty, councillor Keith Kiddie, councillor Rob Colwell, councillor Tony White, councillor Judy Oliver, councillor Rodri Oliver, councillor Julian Kirk, councillor Richard Price, councillor Claire Bowes, councillor Steve Riley, councillor Ed Maxfield and councillor Jane James. Thank you.
Thank you, Elaine. Can I just call it?
Can I also give apologies for councillor Maxine Webb as well, please? I've taken her card out. It's half term and we still don't have proper arrangements in place to support councillors who are carers of disabled children, unfortunately.
Thank you, Emma. Those apologies are noted. May I remind councillors that meetings of council would not normally extend beyond three hours unless this is extended in accordance with 11.1n of the council procedure rules. However, it is my intention, as this is the budget meeting of the council, to extend today's meeting should this become necessary to allow time for all the budget amendments and the budget to be considered. The practical application of this will be that the three-hour mark, I will be asking the meeting if councillors wish to continue. I intend to adjourn the meeting at a suitable point after two hours for a short break. And we'll also be asking councillors at the point when we restart the meeting, if they wish to have the meeting extend beyond three hours, should that become necessary. As per rule 14.3c of the council procedure rules, at the budget meeting in February each year, all motions and amendments relating to budget decisions will be conducted by recorded vote. And the minutes of the proceedings of the meeting will record the names of the persons who cast a vote for the decision or against the decision or are abstaining from voting. We now move on to agenda item two, the minutes from the county council meeting held on Tuesday the 28th of January 2025. Please note, this is for matters of accuracy only. Councillors, have you had a chance to see those minutes and are you content with them?
Yes, if I may, on page five, four point one, my name is spelt incorrectly.
Thank you. We'll make sure that's amended. I do apologise. I can see no other hands, so I can take it that those are a correct record of that meeting. Thank you, councillors. We now move on to agenda item three, to receive any announcements from the leader, chief executive or chair. I've been notified that the leader and chief executive do not have any announcements for this meeting. I have a couple, but I will be brief. I ask members who are interested in the events that I've undertaken to please have a look at those on the council website, they will get published. But there are a couple of matters that I just want to bring particular attention to. Last week, I had the privilege of attending and speaking at the Norfolk Apprenticeship Awards at Cara Road, where we had numerous brilliant companies supporting young people and staff through the apprenticeship schemes and also brilliant apprentices. This was hosted by Norfolk County Council staff and I was impressed by the amount of effort our staff put in to support apprenticeships across the county. The fact that NCC has 600 apprenticeships ongoing at the moment and offers pathways and support through those schemes was really, really pleasing to see. So I just wanted to mention that was occurring. But also I want to just bring some sad news to council. A number of you attended the Battle of Britain event that we hold each year last September, where at the last one, we managed to find four World War Two veterans as guests of honour, who I think all of us found charming, witty and the embodiment of what we expect of that wartime generation, particularly with their modesty. I'm sad to report that one of them died since our last meeting shortly before his 100th birthday. I'll be attending his funeral in the next few days to pay my respects. And I'm sure everyone in this chamber would wish to pass on their condolences to the family of Flight Sergeant Ray Park, who flew over 40 combat missions deep into enemy territory. Thank you. We now move on to agenda item four, members to declare any interest. Do councillors have any interest they wish to declare for this meeting? Councillor Peck and then councillor Chinnery.
Yeah, in respect of a couple of the motions, I'd like to declare an interest in the fact that I am the county council nominated director for Norths.
Thank you. Councillor Chinnery. Thank you. Any others? No. Thank you, councillors. We now move on to agenda item five, the Norfolk County Council Revenue and Capital Budget 2025 to 2076 to 2028 to 2029. Councillors, this is on page 27 of your pack. Just a piece around protocol for this meeting. All group leaders will have 15 minutes to speak. Speakers seconding motions or amendments from groups are subject to a time limit of five minutes. However, group leaders can allocate part of their allocated 15 minutes to their seconders if they so wish. EG each speaking for 10 minutes as per previous budget meetings. It's been previously agreed with group leaders that due to the length of the amendments that have been received, these will not be put up on the screens during the meeting. This is so that people watching can actually watch the debate rather than scrolling through those items. Councillors, you have had the information in advance and it is in your packs and available to you online. Similarly, those watching in, if they wish to look at the amendments, they can actually find them on their device online while they're watching. All other speakers in the debate are subject to a time limit of three minutes. But I will remind councillors, if you speak on amendment, you can speak on later amendments or the substantive item. In accordance with the procedure, all votes on the budget amendments will be taken as recorded votes. I now invite the leader of the council to move the budget recommendations as set out in the report.
Thank you, Chair. Today we discuss and decide on our budget for the forthcoming year. And every year it gets harder in the face of the government's squeeze on local authorities. This weighed against the increasing demand for services and the restrictive legislation which compels us to provide for those with a need, regardless of if we have the money or not. This means that every year we have to do more with less. The man in the street would say that's an impossible task and he is partially correct. It is nigh on near impossible, but we do it year in, year out. This Conservative administration delivers a balanced budget for the people of our county because we care about delivering the services that people need and want. And so we work hard to provide those to the best of our ability. I'd like to pay tribute to officers and members who've spent many hours poring over the books, looking for efficiencies and areas which we can grow in order to provide the best value for money and quality services for our residents. We have both urban and rural areas to consider. We do not prioritise one over the other like some other parties do. If we received a fairer share of the national funding available for local government, we would not be facing such difficult choices. And we call upon the government to recognise that it costs more to deliver services in a rural county and to pay us our fair share to enable us to deliver them as our residents deserve. We have now been given priority programme status for devolution. And we are hopeful that after the spending review, the money that will accompany our devolution journey will be worth it. We're also told there will be some capacity funding to help us set up this new administration. Councillor Morfu has said that the new deal will be better than the last one we negotiated and we shall see about that. We'll have to make the decision on whether we accept what's offered in the autumn this year. And the mayoral elections to the combined authority will happen in 2026. Local government reform is also on the horizon, another major upheaval. Some frankly in decent haste and the proverbial gun to our heads to do this or have it done to us. But we will rise to the challenge as always. And we are currently embarking on gathering the data which will inform the choices available to us. We're not going to be like Norwich, who have already chosen their preferred option, a unitary city, with no thought to what happens to the rest of our county. They will make the data fit their choice, not make a choice based on the facts. And it's very disappointing to see the amount they're prepared to spend to feather their own nest. Whatever comes out of this, we're going to have to move forwards together. Norfolk residents do not want to see county and districts squabbling over how to spend their money. They will expect sound financial justification for whatever is decided. With regard to the papers before us, I'm going to let Andrew Jemison outline the actual numbers and our justifications for them. And I thank him once again for his dedication and hard work on yet again delivering a prudent and financially stable budget for us to consider. So the papers before you start on page 27 and the recommendations are on page 29, which come from the cabinet meeting that we held previously. I commend the budget to you and I hope that you will be able to support it.
Thank you, councillor Mason Billig. I invite the cabinet member for finance to second the proposal and either speak at this point or reserve the right to speak later in the debate. Thank you. I now invite the leader of the Liberal Democratic Alliance Group, councillor Brian Watkins, to respond to the motion proposed by the leader of the council and move his own budget amendment.
Thank you, Mr Chairman, fellow councillors. We all fully understand that these are challenging times and I recognise the difficult choices facing the council as it tries to balance the books. Despite the election of the new Labour government in July, the country remains divided and uncertain about its future. The world we live in is vulnerable and it is little wonder that people are increasingly questioning whether our existing democratic structures are up to the task of serving the needs of modern day society. The aftermath of Covid, the cost of living crisis and growing international conflict have cast a long shadow in so many spheres of our national life. However, it is the relentless cuts to funding for local councils alongside increasing demand for adult and children's social care services and other costs precious that have placed local government in a particularly invidious position. We have all witnessed the savage cuts that this council has had to make to a whole host of valued services over the years. And the damage that this has done to the fabric of our local society, and this cannot be allowed to continue. Never has the need for proper sustainable funding in the longer term been more important. No number of sticking plaster solutions can get in the way of the urgent need for reform of local government finance. Whilst most of us would welcome the new government's recognition of the need for multi-year settlements as a way forward, a commitment to far-reaching change cannot come a day too soon. However, I do feel that it is somewhat ironic to see the party opposite begging for a better, more fairer funding system. After all, it was your government, a Conservative government, that presided over 14 years of cuts to much needed local services, eroding the spending power of councils year on year, leaving local government broken and on life support from which it will struggle to recover. Mr Chairman, at this point, I would like to put on record the Lib Dem group's appreciation to the council staff and the hundreds of volunteers throughout the county for their gallant efforts in delivering vital services with professionalism and commitment. The cabinet member has already placed, or the leader has already placed her appreciation of the hard work going on behind the scenes within the council, and she's right to do so. It can sometimes seem like a thankless task and the strain placed on officers to deliver the council's key services efficiently and effectively remains considerable. And I'm sure that's something we can all agree to. However, despite the general consensus over the need for fairer funding from government, there is no excuse for not standing up properly for Norfolk and its best interests moving forward. We have been let down for too long by political leadership that lacks vision and the energy and dynamism to make things happen. This Conservative administration, which has now been in power at County Hall for nine long years, must take responsibility for its many mistakes and oversights during this period. They have dithered when firm decisive action was required. They have fallen short when strong purposeful direction was needed. Yet despite what is now essentially a false electoral mandate, it does have the opportunity to step up. We stand on the brink of a fundamental change to the structure of local government in this country. And the implications and challenges for Norfolk are huge. But there are immense opportunities too. As the leader has said, devolution can be a potential game changer. We all know that the road ahead of us is likely to be bumpy and uncertain. But with goodwill on all sides, I believe we can find a way forward. Get it right and devolution and local government reform can help unlock the economic potential of Norfolk, enable it to punch above its weight and secure a more prosperous future for everyone. Councillors, I wish I could be more optimistic that things will indeed change for the better. Sadly, I believe the omens are not good. Under this Conservative administration, the council's finances remain in a critical situation. And the gravity of the current situation cannot be underestimated. They have been too slow to get their act together and properly address the enormity of the growing financial crisis engulfing the authority. A budget deficit of for 2025-26 in excess of 45 million and a three-year forecast well in excess of 100 million places at risk many non-statutory services that the people of Norfolk have for long valued and cherished. Last year saw the use of a significant level of reserves to keep the ship afloat and to ensure that adult and children's services were safeguarded as much as possible. But that could only be a short-term fix and it is unsustainable in the longer term. The uncomfortable truth is that we seem to be losing more and more control over our financial direction of travel and increasingly leaving ourselves open to the decision makers at Whitehall. Never has this been more apparent than with the inept handling of possible repayment costs to government if the Norwich Western Link is eventually scrapped. With a potential bill of up to 50 million, the council is continuing to fail to provide suitable reassurances that it has a proper contingency plan in place should this come to pass. And we'll come on to that more in more detail later this morning, no doubt. Historically, it has also taken far too long for the council to commission a proper strategic review in order to root out unnecessary and wasteful duplication, create much needed joined-up thinking across departments and streamline management structures to improve overall performance across the council. This Conservative administration stakes a lot on building a better future through transformation and creating a leaner, fitter council in the longer term. But what does this mean in reality? It's one of those buzzwords that we often hear from the cabinet member for finance, but with little detail about just how this has benefited the council so far and what the transformation programme might hope to achieve over the next two to three years. What role will the further rolling out of AI technology across the council play in that transformation process? How can we make the very most of the opportunities that it appears to offer? And how might services be improved as a result? However, if this all comes in the name of progress, it must not come at the expense of people's jobs and livelihoods. Too often, we talk about these things without properly considering the human impact that it might have on the council staff, many of whom are feeling worried and insecure about what the future might hold. Let's not forget them. The administration should also be looking to reach out more widely to other authorities and public sector bodies to look at joint collaborative projects that could potentially deliver further significant savings. And it should push harder to expand the range of commercial opportunities which could generate much needed new income streams for the council. We do need a better, more efficient way of working. And that will inevitably involve structural change within the organisation. The strategic review served a purpose, but it didn't go far enough in bringing about the reshaping of the council, so desperately needed to meet future needs and aspirations. There will inevitably be further change and restructuring in the years ahead, regardless of what happens with local government reform. Once again, it will be the council taxpayers of Norfolk who will have to bear a heavy burden. With the steady erosion of central government grant allocations over the past 15 years, council tax has risen exponentially as a proportion of the council's total revenue spend. And Norfolk's hard-pressed residents will be paying more for fewer services at a time when the cost of living crisis continues to hit household incomes hard. And many on low incomes will struggle to make ends meet. This is another strong reason why a reform of local government finance is so crucial to enable councils to raise sufficient resources in a way that is fair for residents and gives local politicians the tools they need to help communities thrive and prosper. Norfolk is still very much a low-wage economy with a low council tax base. And there is a need for greater financial clarity and freedom to respond to the economic and social challenges that the county faces. Turning to the Liberal Democrat amendment before you today. I start by highlighting the strategic importance we attach to fast-tracking more preventative initiatives within the social care sector. Through the utilisation of artificial intelligence to design early awareness and alert systems, it would be possible to identify more people who are most at risk of suffering from debilitating conditions. So a better focus on population health management and use of data and intelligence could allow for a holistic and tailored programme of care to be successfully developed. An example of this would be a cardiovascular pilot suggested in the amendment, where an early intervention approach could significantly improve health outcomes of those at risk of heart attacks and strokes. There is a precedent here in Norfolk. PHM was used during the Covid pandemic, with more than 12,000 people added to the shielding list during that particular time. So why are we proposing this today? Because the council's social care market within the risk register is identified as at high risk of collapse. Business as usual, therefore, is in my view not enough. And there will come a time when we just have to look at other, more innovative approaches if we are to properly fulfil our statutory responsibilities. So this investment would help build resilience within the council's social care system. So this investment would help build resilience within the council's social care sector and help to reduce pressures on front-door demand. Next, we are proposing an extension to the Road Safety Community Fund. This has proved extremely popular across the county over the past four years, with more than 100 schemes benefiting people in their local communities. We would like to see this scheme extended for a further two years, perhaps for the remaining lifetime of this council. There are still a number of projects which have not as yet been successfully delivered, and members will then have further time to negotiate with officers how to make schemes feasible. Although we are facing significant financial challenges, we cannot afford to make savings at the cost of our residents' safety and wellbeing. Finally, Mr Chairman, the proposed cut to housing-related support. The response to the council's consultation within the sector was that the proposed change was short-sighted and would have a significant adverse effect on accommodation-based services and the support given to help people become or stay independent. Whilst I recognise that the council has been working with districts to broker an agreement on the second homes premium, it is disingenuous to suggest that this makes up for the £2 million that the administration is proposing to cut from this budget. Again, it comes back to our theme, the Lib Dem theme of prevention, and that is why we are looking to reduce the level of this cut by £500,000. Would have liked to have been more, doing that in order to at least allow districts continued flexibility to focus on homelessness, prevention activities, and schemes in their areas. I therefore have great pleasure in proposing the Lib Dem group's amendment and hope that it will receive the backing of council today. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Watkins. Do you have a second?
I reserve my right, thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you, you have five minutes when you come in. Councilors, the amendment has been moved and seconded, so we'll now move to debate on the amendment. Please can I remind councillors that this is a debate on the amendment and not on the budget recommendations. This means you can still speak in the debate later in the meeting. Councillor Mason-Billig, I take it that you are not accepting the amendment?
I'm not accepting it, Chairman, thank you.
Thank you. Please raise your hand if you wish to speak clearly so that we can see it, and I will take councillors in the order I see hands up, and each will have three minutes to make their point. Councilors, the hands that I saw were councillor Jameson first, then councillor Thomas, councillor Penfold, Eagles, Adams, Neil and Rowett. Just so, if anyone hasn't been called, please show your hands as the debate goes forward so I can get you in. So councillor Jameson, you have three minutes.
Right, well, thank you very much indeed. What a footling amendment this is. I'd just remind the Lib Dems when they witter on about 14 years of cuts that they were in government for the first five. It's a typical example of the Lib Dems looking both ways. Firm action required, they say. Well, firm action is what you've got from this administration. This administration has consistently delivered robust budgets. Many councils, of course, have failed to do so. Somerset is a very good example. The mess that is Cambridge is another. Both Lib Dem councils, of course. Of course, it is very difficult. A child of three could see from the newspapers that local authorities are in a very difficult place, but I commend this council, this administration, for consistently delivering robust budgets year after year. As for the various little things that the leader wants us to do, I mean, the point about proactive intervention pilots, these are being done all through the council already. A minor look at what we're up to, and you would have seen that, so why you need to virtue signal on something which is being done, I simply don't know. Calling for a strategic review, I can remember the Lib Dems fought tooth and nail against our strategic review when we did it, so quite why you think it's a good idea now. Commercial opportunities, I dread to think what would happen if the Lib Dems were in charge of that. And as for the extension of the Road Safety Community Fund, since I have been a member for finance, I would remind you that I have doubled the local members' fund from £6,000 to £12,000. That's precisely the sort of thing which you can use. We have rebuilt our relationship with the DFT following the disastrous Rainbow Alliance, and as a result, considerable funds are being brought in to this county to do precisely the sort of road safety initiatives which you would like to put in place. The funding of it, the removal of that additional Highway Verge cut, it's an extremely popular move that residents have asked us to put in place, and investment in economic development to revitalise. Of course, we need to do that. We are the party of economic growth, and economic growth is the one thing that we can expect to see here. And throughout these amendments, we've seen or heard the clatter of cans being kicked down the road, and any change to the MTFS and any other temporary changes in capitalisation is just that. Thanks very much indeed.
Thank you. I have councillor Thomas, and then councillor Penfold next.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to say to councillor Watkins, ditherer is not really a word that I would identify with myself, but there you go. I'm usually somebody who's pretty straight-talking, and I get on with the job, and we have been getting on with the job, particularly around AI. In fact, I was part of the team that presented to the Social Work Conference back in November 2023, in fact, and the room was rammed with people, there was standing room only, to listen to Norfolk's forward-thinking proactive intervention via the use of AI. Also, you must have missed the cabinet paper where we discussed increasing the reach of that pilot which approached 700 people to 12,080 residents across Norfolk. So that is already in train, and it's being funded from existing budgets. So whilst I would always be grateful for an additional million pounds into the adult social care budget, we are dealing with this now, we have been dealing with it for a considerable time, and we will be identifying people who are not only at risk of a fall, but people who are generally vulnerable and at risk of coming into our services or those of the NHS. Just to pick up on your particular point about cardiovascular risks, as a previous cardiothoracic sister in my previous life, I would very much welcome this work, and we are already in discussion, and I know that my executive director has this on his hit list. But obviously, that is an area of work that we will need to work very closely and collaboratively with the Integrated Care Board, because any reduction in cardiovascular ill health will actually have a very positive impact on the health service as well. I just wanted to mention about Microsoft Copilot, which is another AI technology, which we are currently, we've currently got 60 licences for that to test the technology across the teams. This enables AI to effectively summarise the conversations that our social workers have with clients and reduces the length of time that they may take to write up reports. So I think that's a very, those are two very positive examples of the work that is already in progress and has been for some considerable time. And I think I should remind you that in relation to the housing-related support, housing is a district function, it's a statutory duty of the district councils, and there has been considerable work to make sure that the second homes funding money, let's be clear, Norfolk County Council is holding back 25% of its money to help out the district with their housing commitments. So I think, you know, there's plenty of action going on over here, and there's certainly no dithering. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Thomas. Councillor Penfold.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Speaking on the extension of the Road Safety Community Fund, this four-year fund is due to end in March 2025, with no commitment so far from this administration to extend it. I think we'd all agree here that it's been hugely beneficial, and so we are committing in this amendment to extend it for two more years, with £250,000 allocated in each of those years. That will mean the fund will be secured until the projected dissolution of the County Council. As there have been many road safety projects which were not delivered over the initial duration of this fund, this amendment will allow members another two years to negotiate with officers on how to make schemes feasible. I'm sure all of Norfolk benefited from the scheme in its first four years, with members across this chamber being successful in their divisions. I personally was very glad in North Walsham West to see a successful bid, with the reduction of the speed limit from 40 to 30 miles per hour in the village of Colby near to Alsham. Members will also have had a scheme which narrowly missed out first time around, and this was also true in my division, where a vital scheme in North Walsham to extend double yellow lines along the Millfield Road was unsuccessful. However, anyone who lives, knows or drives through North Walsham will tell you that the extension of these double yellow lines is much needed and has been for some time. It will allow a much safer traffic flow off the busy Norwich Road where it turns into the Millfield Road, making travel far safer for traffic and pedestrians, and I can assure councillor Jameson that this is certainly not footling. Mr Chairman, the extension of this fund for a further two years will allow all members to revisit schemes which previously narrowly missed out on funding, or indeed will allow them to introduce new schemes to improve road safety in their divisions and across the county. So let's do what our residents want us to do. Let's vote for something sensible, practical and much needed, the extension of the Road Safety Community Fund for another two years. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Penfold. I have councillor Eagles next, then Adams, Neil and Rowett have indicated, so councillor Eagle.
Thank you, Chair. Obviously, the Liberal Democrats have confused me like they confuse most people. A few weeks ago, councillor Tim Adams was on the TV, speaking about the second homes money and how it's going to help, and appreciated what the county council had done in putting part of their share back into the districts to help homeless. But he also said, on that quote on TV, that this would still allow the districts to help tourism, small businesses and their towns. Yet today, he's proposing that we cut this across the rest of the county. I do wonder what the Liberal Democrat members representing Alsham, Cromer and North Walsham are going to say to their residents if this was to go through, and perhaps they wish to decline anyway. Councillor Ring, I thought you, after being involved at the Kings Lynn and West Norfolk in your borough capacity and a pilot scheme, you would welcome this love-your-market town extension after it had done so well, and I hope you do refer it. But it does come down to it, and I am glad that the Liberal Democrats wish to continue the hazardous waste collection service, because I'm sure myself and many high-street businesses will consider that is exactly where it needs to go on their budget proposal.
Thank you, councillor Eagle. Councillor Adams.
Well, I wasn't quite sure what councillor Eagle was talking about there, but I'm presuming it's the £250,000 for town centre placemaking. We do certainly have some questions about how you propose to use that money, whether it relates to the Norfolk Economic Strategy etc. Not being made clear, you're not going to be able to do a lot across all Norfolk towns with just £250,000. But I did want to speak actually in favour of the partial reversal of housing-related support funding, which I believe is a £2 million cut, and as you've seen, we are proposing a £500,000 of that back, and I think that's important. I'm particularly concerned about the impact on care leavers, and, you know, I have to concede that I think the county council previously has been very good to care leavers in conjunction, of course, with the district, city and borough councils. And I would remind councillor Jameson that actually that was never a subject of negotiations in respect of the second homes premium that we have agreed to collect. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Adams. I have councillor Neil and Rowett after, who have indicated to speak. Councilors, I'm given fair warning that I've got no other hand, so if you do wish to speak, councillor Sayers, after that, I do intend, unless I see another hand, to move to councillor Roper for his five minutes. So councillor Neil.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to question what councillor Jameson said with his robust budgets that we've had for so many years. Is that a euphemism for robust cuts? Because that's what we see on this side. Just looking at the proposals from the Lib Dems, I think they're all very valid. It would have been better if there was more money, but they're being quite prudent. The extension to the Road Safety Fund, yes, I think we do need more money in that. We'd had some funding recently that hasn't actually come to fruition yet for Norwich, and that's government funding, and it gives us two flashing road signs outside of schools, which is a very limited amount, and if you use your members' funding, that'll provide for another two, so that would still need a lot more work. The most important one on the partial reversal of cuts to housing-related services, it's just a no-brainer. I don't understand why this Conservative administration pick on the most vulnerable to take money away from, and the fact that councillor Jameson wants to kick that down the road by saying it's, you know, it's a district's responsibility. I will remind him that with unitary authorities, he's just kicking it into his own backyard because he's going to have to pick it up in the future.
Thank you, councillor Neil. Councillor Rowett.
I'd also like to speak about the Road Safety Community Fund, which I agree with this Liberal Democrat amendment, that this has been a hugely useful and interesting experience, spending this money. But it has been evident, as we've already heard, that there are many, many more schemes that need attention than can possibly be funded from what we've had. And I'd like to emphasise that we actually need serious attention to giving us a real vision zero in the Norfolk speed management strategy. I have every year a list of urgent safety needs, so why do we get the right to do it only once in a lifetime? And competitive bidding is not helpful, it just means that we need to maximise the number of casualties on our roads in order to win the funding to put things right. So I proposed earlier in my time on this council that we should set up a cross-party working group to have a look at the Norfolk speed management strategy and build into it the expectation that we can put in safety measures before the casualties, not afterwards. So while I would support the extension of this fund, I think we need a transformation in our whole approach to safety on the roads. Thanks.
Thank you, councillor Rowett. Councillor Sayers.
Thank you, Chair. Councillor Jameson wishes to lambaste the Liberal Democrats, citing Somerset as an example. Let's not forget, the blame there lays where it truly is with the Conservatives' administration there between 2009 and 2016, who voted, as the administration, to vote to freeze council tax. This may have been a vote winner with residents, but crippled the successive administrations, which happened to be the Liberal Democrats, and left it in the precarious situation it is now. I wish to speak of choices, of roads diverging, of futures unwritten. For too long, we have merely endured the weight of crisis of futures unwritten. For too long, we have merely endured the weight of crisis upon crisis, watching as our services bend ever closer to breaking. Our most vulnerable left clinging to systems designed not to uplift, but merely to sustain them until the next inevitable collapse. But I tell you now, there is another way. Let us begin with the Adult Social Care Preventative Programme, a beacon of possibility amidst the storm. We propose that million-pound investment to establish pilot schemes that embrace innovation, that embrace the future, that artificial intelligence, often spoke of in hushed tones as distant and looming force, can be wielded not as a threat, but as a tool of preservation. With early awareness and alert systems, we could detect those most at risk of debilitating conditions before they fall victim to them. We could, for once, be ahead of the crisis instead of scrambling behind it. We know this works. Norfolk has done it before. During the pandemic, as councillor Brian Watkins has mentioned, over 12,000 people were added to the shielding list using population health management techniques. We used data to identify and protect them. We increased vaccination rates in areas of high infection. We saved lives. Why then should we stop now? Why, when we stand on the precipice of transformation, should we falter? Some will argue that such an investment is too great in times of financial strain. But I ask you, what is the cost of inaction? The Local Government Association found that for every pound invested in early prevention care, we save £3.17 down the line. If we do not break this cycle now, there will come a time when we are no longer making decisions, but merely managing the fallout of our own failures. When the social care system collapses under the weight of demand, when we are left asking how we let this come to be, we must remember, we have the choice now. We also have a choice when it comes to safety of our residents. The Road Safety Community Fund, a four-year commitment set to expire, left without renewal, as if the need for safer streets simply ceases to exist on a set date. We will not stand by and watch this happen. With a modest £500,000 investment, we can extend this fund for further two years, ensuring our
Councillor Sayers, your three minutes up if you can sum up. Thank you.
I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Long.
Yeah, Chairman, I wasn't going to say anything at all, but we started off a budget amendment with let's bash the Conservatives. We spend 11 and a half minutes out of 15 doing that. We then get on to the subject matter of what it is they want to change, and what do they want to change? Well, they want to change 1.75 million in total out of what is, we always hear the figure, one and a half billion pounds gross budget. So tinkering around the edges, an excuse to bash the Conservatives. I would suggest that under, we're going to hear some more probably in the summary, and I don't see why we should. And so for that reason, I suggest that we use a motion without notice under our constitution, 11.1J. And I think it's the question now we put, might get a seconder, we might have to listen to five more minutes of Conservative bashing. It doesn't help, because what then happens is, we have bashing back at the Lib Dems and saying how bad things are in the parts of the world they represent. It is ridiculous. Let's deal with the budget matter, and let's deal with amendments, but let's not just bash each other for the sake of it. It achieves nothing, Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Long. Just in reference to your move into the vote, it's within my chair's discretion. I've actually asked councillors several times whether they wish to speak on the debate, and we've taken everyone that has indicated. So I think it would be wrong at this point to not give councillor Roper as the seconder his five minutes, and then we will move to councillor Watkins, as per usual, to sum up, and then the leader to have her right of reply. So I will not be putting it to the vote at the moment. Councillor Roper, you have your five minutes.
Thank you, Chairman. Well, I'm very proud to second this Liberal Democrat amendment, and I'll keep the bashing to a minimum, councillor Long. I'm proud to second this amendment because it's about prevention. And as councillor Sayers very rightly put, prevention, particularly within the adult social care sector, for every pound you spend, you save £3.17. So why wouldn't you do more of it? I entirely applaud the words of councillor Thomas around the use of AI within the adult social care sector at present, and the role that Norfolk is playing in that. What we are asking is simply that we do more and that we do quicker. And the fact with AI is, what seemed unimaginable two or three years ago will be business as usual in a year or two's time. If we get in three years' time, we'll be asking the question, why on earth didn't you do this sooner? We have had very lengthy discussions with senior officers in adult social care about this proposal. It is costly, and we know what it can possibly deliver. Now, I'm going to draw contrast here. This council has had something of a late budget windfall in terms of its late numbers here with these extra million pounds which it's had to allocate. And you have a choice. You can either spend that quickly, or you can invest it to save. So the choice is, you can either spend it cutting a few more verges, you can spend it spraying a few more weeds, you can spend £5,000 a week across all of our high streets in Norfolk, there must be over 50 of them, so that frankly won't go very far, or you can invest positively in AI to save money for this council in the future and prevent human misery. And in terms of what a million pounds can get you, the Fools project, rightly been raised, rightly been applauded, we could double that within this envelope of money. The co-pilot has been raised by councillor Thomas, the 60 licences we have at the moment, for an extra £200,000, we could double that. We could make the jobs of our social care staff much easier. We could drive more savings through the system through a modest investment in an extra 60 licences. To be mentioned about the cardiovascular pilot, within this envelope of money, as well as doubling your co-pilot, as well as doubling your Fools pilot, you could have one, possibly two pilot projects in districts within our county to look to develop a better system around identifying people for cardiovascular care. Now, what's the better long-term option for this council? Cutting a few more verges, spraying a few more weeds, spending a few hundred quid in each high street, or making a £1 million investment in NAI, which frankly, in a couple of years, you're going to have to make anyway in order to catch up. That's what we're setting out here. Points have been well made about the Road Safety Fund. That was put in place for a reason, because it was for projects that went beyond what was available in the existing parish partnerships and what was available under the local member funds. There are some very important schemes which are being delivered on this. I've delivered one myself as far as the A140 is concerned. I'd like to put in another one about the B1150 between Colchester and Norwich, quite frankly, which I think everybody who uses that road would agree is needed. And I think possibly the only reason the Conservatives are opposing this extension is because they didn't think of it first, quite honestly. The last bit of prevention is around the homelessness, £500,000 back into those services. And frankly, why wouldn't you? A homeless person, according to many estimates, costs the public sector £10,000 a year. And if you think that within the accommodation services funded by this council, we were looking at 1,100 clients last year, the cut of around a third of the funding, if you take a third of those people now not receiving those placements in hostels, around 300, multiply that by your £10,000 per person, and it blows your saving out of the water as frankly short-sighted. We are looking at a preventative approach with this budget amendment. It might be small in relation to the overall figure. We accept that. Well, if it's small, well you can just do it then, can't you? You can find the money for it. If you can find the money for a few weeds and a few more verges, I think you can find it to invest in services which very quickly will deliver as far as reducing misery for people with health conditions in this county, people who are at risk of homelessness within this county. And we will save money for Norfolk, and Norfolk will win all round. That's second.
Thank you, councillor Roper. Councillor Watkins, it is now your opportunity to do the final response.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I will be very brief, because councillor Roper's covered most of the points. I'd just like to just comment on Alison Thomas's comments about the pilot schemes. And I think she generally welcomes the idea, perhaps, of a cardiovascular pilot being launched. And obviously, you know, the Fools pilot, which I referred to in my speech, worked well. I think if these pilots can be made to work and are successful, then obviously they help to keep people independent and avoid them having to go into hospital and care settings. We can't, as a council, rely on fairer funding coming to us any time soon. It'd be great if it did. I know there's a consensus, I think, within the chamber that we want to see that. But, you know, we have to be, as Dan Roper said, bolder and more innovative, think outside the box. So, you know, we have to try and make our money work smarter. So if we can save more money through prevention initiatives, then that actually does free up more money, perhaps, to be allocated to those people with higher medical needs. And that's going to be really, really important. On the question of housing-related support that's been referred to as well, I appreciate that there's been an agreement brokered with the districts with regard to the rebates from the second homes council tax premium. However, this measure, your £2 million cut that you're proposing here, is separate from that. And at the very least, we should be looking to maintain our prevention fund of around £500,000. It'd be nice to do more, but to suggest that the money going back to the districts is making up for that, I think is disingenuous at best. So that's it. I think I've covered everything there, Mr Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Watkins. As the proposer of the original motion, I now turn to the leader's final right of reply on the amendment before we move to the vote.
Thank you, Chairman. I know Somerset may have only been Lib Dem for nine years, but surely they could have got off the pot by now and done something about it, rather than blame a previous administration. How long have you got to be in control before you actually take some responsibility for it as a Liberal Democrat? Always criticising, never coming up with very practical solutions, fiddling around the edges, talking about streamline and cutting out duplication of the council, but nobody's got to, nobody could possibly lose their job over that. Transformation means that people have to move around, unfortunately. Facing both ways, as usual. We talked about housing-related support services. You have to remember that this council's lost huge grants from government. And this is a district function. It's not a statutory service for this council. And we've done what we can to support it as best as we can. We're using the second home council tax to try and help support it further. But we've had our grants cut. District councils have been given millions of pounds to help to fill that gap, and they need to step up and help us to help those vulnerable people in our society. On artificial intelligence, yes, we are in the forefront of this, as you have acknowledged. It's not a magic bullet. We're dealing with vulnerable people. You can use AI, but you still need to check everything to make sure it's a cost-effective service. You can't just throw money at it. So we are doing what we can as fast as we can. Economic development in high streets, incredibly important. It might not be enough money. We'd love to put a lot more in, but we're doing what we can to try and kick-start some economic development in some of those smaller market towns. And I think they would welcome that. And highways, verge cutting, it's about road safety. We had issues with excessive growth last year. We're trying to address that this year. We have 6,000 miles of road in this county. It's a very, very important thing. So I'm sorry, but this amendment is not bold, and it's not innovative, and we can't possibly support it.
Thank you, councillor Mason Billig. That is the end of the debate on that amendment, which means we will now go to the vote. It will be a recorded vote on this amendment. Can I please have that on the systems, please? Thank you, councillors. Please vote on the system then. As always, if anyone has a problem with their vote being recorded, please show your hands so that we can record it. Councillors, can I confirm that everyone has voted, please? Please indicate if you haven't. Councillor Kittle-Moderis.
Thank you, Chairman. I pressed the wrong button. I'm not having a very good day today, I have to tell you.
Okay. Could you give me more of a clue as to which you want to do? That would probably help.
I pressed abstain, and I really need to go against. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll just make sure that's been recorded that way. So I've got them. Right, councillors, the votes have been recorded. They are 4.13, abstentions 9 and against 40, which means that amendment has been lost. Can we please just let that scroll through so people can see how the votes were recorded? Just while we're doing that, councillor Morphew, I'll be coming to you in a moment if you'd like to get ready. All right, thank you. Thank you, councillors. Right, we are now moving on to invite councillor Steve Morphew of the Labour Group to respond to the motion proposed by the leader of the council and move his own budget amendment. Councillors, if it assists you, that is in the supplementary agenda, page A6. Councillor Morphew, you have 15 minutes to speak and may share part of this time with your seconder, who otherwise will have five minutes. Over to you.
Thank you, Chair. Our amendment this year is set out in some detail, as we are raising serious issues which are sometimes a bit technical. Last year, we set out a plan to redesign many council services, including the way we deliver those services to those who rely on us for support. Interestingly, I will refer to councillor Long again in a moment, but councillor Long was good enough last year to acknowledge that at least we had a plan. That plan still stands, and the failure of the administration to make the kind of fundamental changes we need and can make, and should be making, exacerbates the financial problems left. And I have to say it, after 14 long years of Lib Dem, Conservative coalition-initiated, Conservative-driven austerity. But I'm not going to go in for much more. Well, the new government is actually setting about dealing with that legacy and does require tough decisions that would be unpopular. But at least we've got a government that's trying to get a grip. And I hear complaints about the lack of money, but there is a convenient loss of memory that makes it all ring rather hollow, as does the anti-Labor rhetoric, which actually, councillor Long, we heard at the beginning of this debate, because that was where it started from. And I don't think it's a good thing either. If we're hoping to get a good deal for Norfolk, we might do well to remember that our words are being heard outside this chamber and in government. And it's a Labour government. So whilst criticism is normal in a political environment, it won't do much to help us make a case to government for our county. Not taking forward the previous devolution deal has not pushed us to the back of the queue, far from it. We're fast-tracked to securing a devolution deal that broadens the scope and powers through our model of a mayor, not a Manchester or urban version, an equivalent appropriate to our location, demographic and geography. And it's for the county council to lead on this, but I'm concerned the administration hasn't so far told us how districts, residents or indeed members here are going to be involved, although there was something in our emails yesterday. The previous iteration was all done out of the public gaze, and it's time to improve on that, just as we improve on the deal being negotiated. And I was delighted to see the speed of progress with the publication of the consultation yesterday, and I echo the call for maximum response from Norfolk. Indeed, as the leader said, I said there would be a better deal. Norfolk. Indeed, as the leader said, I said there would be a better deal. And already, the timescales and investment and what's in the white paper are starting to show that this could be true. Now, I can't promise the negotiating skills of this administration will deliver a better deal, but it's there to be had. Should you require the help with negotiations, you're welcome to include me in the team, although I won't be using the kind of anti-Labour rhetoric that would simply damage our prospects. Separate but inexorably linked is the well-known overdue reorganisation of local government. And we do need to continue to work with that at speed. What we can't afford to do is to get mired in the transition, which is why the timescales need to be as fast as they are. We need to ignore the distractions and those who would put self-interest above the greater good. The prize of more devolved powers and resources and a local government structure that's fit for the future is a once-in-a-generation opportunity that we should be grasping. So we set our financial premises around the fact that the world is moving on. And there's not really too much point in making the kind of suggestions that we have made in previous years within the context of an existing council when we've got so many changes that are being made. Apart from dear and meeting point and the homelessness cut, the housing support cut that others will talk to, we've largely avoided the revenue account. Reversing the housing-related support homelessness proposals will be addressed by others. You've already heard some of the discussion in the Lib Dems proposals, but we're proposing that actually, when there are difficult decisions to be made, housing support homelessness actually trumps the lot, because it is self-defeating to cut money which is actually likely to come back and bite us with demands on the services that we provide in other places. But apart from that, maybe somebody can explain to me, in the context of these new things that are coming, how this convinces districts that county council is working in partnership with them. We've proposed to pay for our changes in revenue from the million-pound windfall that we weren't expecting to get. There's nothing wrong with the proposals for spending it that the administration has put forward. It is a matter simply of choice. And what we're suggesting is actually it ought to go back to the select committees for discussion about how we might deliver those. And I am conscious of what councillor Jamieson said in scrutiny, and I wrote it down so that he didn't forget it. We have to make savings. Some of the savings aren't popular, and I absolutely understand that, and that goes throughout the system. So we have got opportunities to make those savings potentially in other places, and it will be about priorities. Concerns are also being raised, or continue to be raised, about the management of the Norwich Western Link. And this amendment is not about the merits or otherwise of the Western Link. Our concerns would be the same for any capital scheme of this magnitude where there is a red risk warning. I note at the comments in scrutiny that the scheme is now considered to be owned by the government. Well, if that makes any difference, it isn't reflected in the risk register. It remains a highly likely event that would have serious consequences. The risk approved recently by Cabinet, as read, has been through the Audit and Governance Committee and should be treated, it says, within our financial envelope. The response from the administration is we don't yet know what we're dealing with, so we can't do anything. The section 151 officer signs off this as a robust budget in his terms, and I have no doubting about his professional judgment. But let me draw an analogy. A red risk is an equivalent of a red weather warning. Like any weather event, you can't be sure if it will happen. But if, for example, the red warning is for a torrential downpour that could result in flooding, I suggest any prudent person would move their belongings to higher ground and maybe fill some sandbags just in case. Our amendment proposes filling some sandbags and making prudent preparations alongside keeping an eye on the weather forecast. Not to do so and to wait in the hope that the weather forecast will change means we could find ourselves inundated and relying on a government to bail us out. Whichever way you come at it, the Western Link fails, if the Western Link fails and the risk register makes it a red risk, not me, Cabinet did that, we will need exceptional financial support. And I don't want the section 151 officer in the embarrassing position of having to explain why this administration took no precautions. If local government reorganising goes ahead, one of the issues will be how we manage our assets, including wholly-owned companies, in whatever new council structure emerges. Norse is the biggest local authority trading company in the country. As such, it is both a huge asset and could be a considerable risk. It is recorded as a green risk on the risk register, so its significance is acknowledged. At last council, it was repeated that decisions by Norse are business decisions for them, not the council, but that's actually not entirely true. For example, the closure of care homes, according to the contract with Norse, must be discussed with the liaison committee under the terms of this contract with Norse for managing council-owned care homes. If they're agreed, they become part of the Norse business plan for approval by Cabinet. In other words, the council has a process under the contract where decisions on such matters cannot be taken without council approval. They're not decisions for Norse alone. But the liaison committee hasn't met since 2019, and I can find no change. I can find no successor body, and none of the homes recently closed have gone through the designated contractual process. The shareholder committee hasn't inherited those functions. The governance and decision-making feels to me as if it's all over the place. But the Cabinet cannot absolve itself of responsibility. Perhaps that's why it was taken below the line and why there's been such resistance to transparency. And only a very few in the chamber have any idea what's happening to all those care homes that we own. Under the leases, all of which are public, if the council decommissions care homes leased to Norse, Norse can acquire the freehold for one pound each. If it's a straight business decision, why on earth wouldn't they? They would be worth a fortune. And if they don't hand them back to the council, I want to understand who made that decision and why, as it makes no business sense. If they come back to the council, what are we going to do with them? There's currently nothing in the capital programme, nor any sign of sales in the projections. In asset terms alone, we need an explanation. In policy terms, we have a huge void. Why, when money was cheap, were the existing residential homes not upgraded to modern standards or re-provided on a programme open for public and member scrutiny? The council found the money for essential works on County Hall, but not our care home estate. Neither Norse or the county council has invested in those homes or re-provided so that now they fail to meet the standards. Occupancy has fallen, together with income, and now somehow Norse carers become loss-making. So what is to become these once proud beacons of care? Transfer for a quid apiece to Norse freehold to do with, as their business interests dictate, beyond our reach and scrutiny? Or return to the county council as no longer fit for purpose? Leaving us where? In our direct provision of residential care? Where in our promoting independence programme? Where in our stewardship of important public assets? And where in the peace of mind for the staff and residents? And from this county council point of view, where on earth are we with the governance of Norse when we get to this point? It's on the scrutiny committee agenda for next month. Somebody, somewhere, though, is going to have to invest in these homes. So what we're doing is putting money into the capital programme to make us discuss this in public and to give us a head start so that we have actually got some money, whether it's lent to Norse for them to invest, whether it's invested ourselves. It's going to cost money, and we need to force a discussion on it, because people are entitled to have that discussion. People in this chamber are entitled to have this discussion, and people outside are entitled to hear it and be part of it. So I want to know what they're going to do. And to be honest, I am as much concerned about the future plans and governance as I am about how much goes in the budget. We've got to get the lid off this. It needs to be sorted out before we transfer ownership to any new council structure. Something's wrong here and needs to be put right. Our other big issue is Angel Road, and you might feel that this is a bit parochial, but it is an example of the, again, the things that are going on. Julie Brochek-Colton will speak to it more in a moment. But how would you feel if a much-loved school building had been left abandoned on your patch for four years when there's a desperate need for special educational needs and disability provision? It's sitting there, going nowhere. Yes, money's already in the capital budget, the SENDS budget, and we haven't seen the capital budget in detail. If you ask for it, you can probably get it. But we haven't had it circulated to us. For twenty seven, twenty eight, the references are in the amendment, so you can look them up. What we're suggesting is that we bring it forward to make sure that there is money available to do work when that site comes back from Evolution Trust, so that it can be turned into SENDS provision. Three million is probably not enough, but there would be time to find additional money from other sources, or perhaps councillor Jamieson might be able to find it within a prudential borrowing limits which he himself is setting. We need to make sure that this deteriorating building, which is a SENDS opportunity, is actually in a position where we can join the dots and find a solution. Four years it's sat there, how much longer? If it comes back, I've heard say that the Evolution Trust, who got the lease at the moment, can't afford to put it back into the condition it was in when the lease was first granted. Well, who's going to pick up the tab then? Is it going to be us? Is it going to be the government? Or is it just going to sit there while we argue about it and it continues to deteriorate and not used for any positive purpose? Now, we don't know how much this is going to cost, but we do know that it needs to be something which is much further up the agenda. So it's on the agenda today as part of our amendment to make sure it gets discussed. Now, if you don't want to discuss it, that's fine, but tell us what your solution is, because our solution is there. As you can see, and I'll refer to councillor Long again, there is a theme developing here. Western Link risk, care homes, Centre Angel Road, three major, major budget strains and key issues of council policy where there are no proper plans. This budget amendment, once again, offers not just financial amendments, but a plan to deliver solutions in key problems and key areas that this council is facing and facing big time over the next year. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Morphew. Councillor Mason-Billig, do you accept that amendment?
No, Chairman, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Morphew, do you have a second?
Me. I've reserved my right, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Smith-Cair. That means we now move on to the debate on the amendment, councillors. So I have councillor Peck indicated and... Councillors, I have a number of hands indicating, I believe we've got everyone, but as we go through, I'll start reading out who I've got. And then if your name's not called, please forgive me, and we'll get you on the running order. So I'll start off with councillor Peck, followed by councillor Carpenter, then followed by councillor Wymark and councillor Brochek-Colton. Councillor Peck.
Thank you, Chair. Needless to say, I will be voting against this amendment for many reasons, but I just want to focus on one of the issues raised, which is the care homes. I think the point about, that has already been made about futtering around the edges, I think this is some desperation here. It seems to be another one of councillor Morphew's rants about governance rather than the budget. And I thought this was a budget meeting, but never mind. Yeah, the care market, as you know, is changing, and with the demographics of the county and also with our focus on independent living. Care homes need larger rooms, specialist equipment, as the increasing numbers of residents need specialist care. The amount of money you're proposing to invest in this, whether it's through Norse or through directly from the council, would actually be totally insufficient and would never cover the costs required. So I don't see the point of that. Plus the fact that Norse are making great strides in trying to return to profit and reduce their borrowing. And this would seem to be, or one part of this proposal would actually do the opposite. So I just, I'm totally opposed to this proposal, and I am, some of the others, which I'm sure my colleagues will pick up. But I would like to say, all the budget proposals that I've seen from the opposition, I think send a very stark warning to the residents of Norfolk that should they ever gain control of this council, some of the ridiculous decisions they would make. So I'll just leave it there. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Peck. I've got councillor Carpenter, then Wymark, then councillor Brochek-Colton. Councillor Carpenter.
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you councillor Morphew for the input today. I'm actually quite concerned as to where we are with this at the moment, particularly in a public forum, because some of this is sensitive commercial information. So I'm treading round in my reply. That money that you're suggesting has already been allocated. And there is no money left in that year, because you've put twenty five, twenty six, and it has all been allocated to projects. In fact, you mentioned the nine million in one of your, in here, and that actually has gone to three sites. So your suggestion of three million, I don't quite know where you think that will be coming from, because you haven't actually identified a budget line as to where that money would come from. So, and actually, the three million to start will actually not generate this progress any quicker, because we are in talks. So I can't agree with that at all. I will say, though, that in the potential reuse of Angel Road, we have recently commissioned an assessment of the site whilst we await the surrender from the Academy Trust, as we recognise that it will need to do this at some point, and local people want to understand its future. We are grateful that Evolution Academy Trust have given us permission to do so whilst they remain as the leaseholder. This asset aims to provide us with a greater understanding of risks and constraints and an indication of potential costs. But we do have some concerns whether the building of this age could meet the specific need of the cohort of SENDS children, which in turn could impact on the viability for this purpose. So if we are to remodel the site for SENDS children, any investment of this sort is likely to be significant and outside of currently allocated funds. All local authorities are hoping for an announcement on the capital for SENDS pupils in the coming months. For this particular site is to be secured, as you ask, it would require an allocation over and above the current amount for Norfolk. And I will actually just point out that one of our local MPs, Alice McDonald, has also inquired about the school. And we have replied to the MP, and I understand one of your members is in receipt of the copy of that letter, which explains fully the position of this school.
Councillor Carpenter, time's up. Can you sum up?
I am so sorry, Chairman. I could go on a lot more, but I won't. But basically, then, I am not supporting this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Carpenter. Councillor Wymark.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you. I wanted to speak about homelessness. As anyone in this chamber who knows me knows how important I think homelessness is and rough sleeping. But also as well, my councillor Morphew was speaking about responsibility and about devolution. And perhaps ministers listening into this conversation, well, if they listen into the conversation, they actually fully understand the lack of understanding of both county and district responsibilities, because this is a statutory duty of districts. And districts hold the money for this. districts hold the money for this. As we said, we're already transferring two and a half million, so this completely covers this two million pounds that we're suggesting here. But also, which I don't know, perhaps you're unaware, but there's been an uplift in homelessness prevention grant of one point six million pounds for Norfolk districts, not for county, for districts. So in total, the districts will be receiving five point seven million pounds for homelessness this coming year. Yeah, plus a two point five, plus a two point five, so over eight million pounds. So I don't understand why we need to look at this two million pounds, because there's not a two million pound gap there. That money has already been given to the districts and more, so this does not exist. But I do think this is something we need to look at, but also look at the statutory duties of the districts, not of county. We will do everything we can to help support communities, as we do every single day. However, there are times when the districts need to take their responsibility back. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Wymark. I've got councillor Brochek-Coulton next, and then Adams, Kemp and Plant in that order if they'd like to prepare. Councillor Brochek-Coulton.
Thank you, Chair. It's quite unbelievable that after four years of asking cabinet for the former Angel Road Junior School to be handed back to county, that it hasn't. This school is just sitting there, deteriorating by the day. Metal sheets were put up on the windows when we asked if we could have a competition to put the children's drawings onto them to make it look less dull, but that was declined. People living almost on the property have to contact me every month because of plants growing out of the guttering and drains. People going on the site causing all sorts of problems because it doesn't have proper security. Why is the organisation who owns the school, can we not get the trust who has taken the lease on, to be forced to look after the upkeep of the school as their main priority? How are they allowed to take the school on and just leave it to rot? Parking outside the school is causing problems as well, and we cannot take the said lines out of the road just in case we eventually lose them with the SEND school. We have people sleeping rough at the back of the school, which could be an issue if, if at worst, the cuts get proposed by Norfolk Tories get passed today. Why isn't more being done to secure the school and making sure it is in good condition when it is finally returned to county? It's a terrible shame that our SEND children are being sent so far away for their school and when it could be so much closer if this site was given back to the county. Please give our SEND children a chance and vote for our motion, and let's get the school looking as wonderful it did when it wasn't an academy. All of my four children went to Angel Road School, and it's a sorry sight seeing each day how desolate the site is becoming. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Adams.
Well, I first of all just wanted to, well, I'm going to give a balance to this, actually, in terms of some of the comments, the leaders' comments, other comments about the funding to districts. I would remind the leadership of the council that the district councils have received a zero percent increase in Norfolk from the government settlement this year due to the realignment towards the Northern Met. So a lot of what you're saying is quite outrageous, really, in terms of the additional funding that we have received, but we will obviously continue to deal with the pressures of homelessness, sometimes with over eighty children a night in temporary accommodation, it's very significant. But that is not the subject of what I wanted to say. I wanted to speak in favour of what the Labour group are saying about Angel Road. It might seem Norwich-centric, but actually, I believe it will have a positive impact across the rest of the county due to the disparate provision of this sort that exists. And I would point out that there are two empty school sites in Norfolk too, and possibly more across the county. There is much more to be done here, and I think that opportunity exists across the county. In respect of Norse Care, so many questions are now being asked, I would ask that we do have a members briefing to cover these issues fully. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Adams. Councillor Kemp, please.
Thank you, Chair. I'm speaking in favour of this amendment, and it's been quite a revelation, really, because after the closure of Berman House Care Home in the West, and now the announcement of another care home in the western locality, Linden Court, being closed, we now see that, yes, it is the council that makes the decision, and yet, the cabinet said when I brought questions, you can't pass the corporate veil, nor is it a standalone company. It was shameful the way you closed Berman House, and I hope everybody will get behind this amendment to make sure that we are making the right sort of decisions to invest in our care home estate for the benefit of our residents.
Thank you councillor Kemp. The next three speakers that I have is councillor Plant, councillor Rumsby, and then councillor Jameson. Councillor Plant.
Thank you, chairman. I just want to go on a little bit about what's going on with ourselves and government. I mean, we are, discussions are underway with government, and we are expecting to continue through the coming weeks, and we'll provide an update on these when we are able to. But we want a good outcome for Norfolk. That includes tackling the transport issues to the west of Norwich, which haven't gone away, and in fact, will only get worse with planned growth around the city. It also includes agreeing how we deal with the project finances. Reaching a solution with DFT as our funding partner in this project is fundamental to both of these issues. We don't want to prejudice the outcome, but the government has said it is keen to enable economic growth and deliver infrastructure, and make the planning system less onerous for applicants. So we've got shared goals, which gives us confidence that we can reach a good solution together. I just want to remind you what the benefits of having a fully dual orbital route around Norwich and take traffic off the insuitable local roads and out of our communities. So what it will do is reduce traffic congestion, queuing on local roads and in communities, which is projected to worsen without the N W L due to planned housing and employment growth in and around Norwich. It will be a boost to economic growth in Norfolk, and the ambitions and profitability of our existing businesses and key industries by reducing transport costs and opening up new markets and recruiting opportunities. It will be increasing our attractiveness to investors and entrepreneurs as a place to do business by providing better links from Norwich and the north of the county to the A forty seven, West Norfolk and the Midlands. Shorter and more reliable journey times to key sites around Norwich, including Norfolk and Norwich University Hospital, the University of East Anglia, Norwich Airport and the Food Enterprise Park. Less traffic in communities would improve air quality near where people live and would support people to walk and cycle, and contribute to a better quality of life for local residents. Improvements to road safety and a reduction in collisions as transfers onto a higher standard dual carriageway route. It would give more resilience in Norfolk's road network, for example, in the events of roadworks and closures on the A forty seven, as seen last weekend. So, yes, we do understand the issues that are happening there, we understand the finances. The DFT are our partners in this. They have given us thirty million pounds already to build up the business case, which was accepted by DFT. So the business case has already been accepted, they've already allocated money towards the project. They are our partner in this. So I think it's important that as a partner, they help us solve the problems that another government body has put in place from last March, which wasn't there before. So I think it's something that we need to have a discussion about. We'll wait to see what the outcomes are, but at the moment, it's clear that we can't progress until the current issues are resolved.
Thank you councillor Plant. I've got councillor Rumsby, then councillor Jameson, then councillor Thomas.
Thank you, Chair. I know politics is about priorities and choice, and I think most people in this council chamber, and I don't think the public would be disgusted with the fact that I believe, and a lot of people around here, I do believe, believe this, is that we're here to drive out inequality and help the most vulnerable in our society. If our care homes are got out so, they have deteriorated so much, we've had years to know about this and years to fix it, but we have decided the choices of this council has been to do nothing. Yes, there is AI, and there's been a lot of work done there, virtual walls and everything, but anyone watching the BBC programme the other day will discover that, you know, NHS is full of people in beds that can't go home because for various reasons like hoarding, and needs a care package, and even down to the fact that key codes, no one knows them, so they can't get them in the home. You know, we know that people are living with more complex needs and that sort of thing, and the population is getting older, so therefore we need to deal with it. Is it truly financial prudent to actually outsource to care homes that are charging rather a lot of money for this care, and also to the private sector that we know is decreasing as we speak? Would it be more financial prudent to actually think about a way around helping to get the care homes up to standard? Since two thousand and fourteen, we have had individual care, personal centre of care, dignity and privacy. We know that. We've had it for years. But to me, have we got the capacity in the private sector to deal with the increasing amount of people needing care? People get better and live longer if, in fact, they live closer to their community with the support, not away, you know, hundreds of miles away or whatever. So I'm just saying to everyone, you know, maybe we shouldn't put it in the too difficult box, maybe should explore it a bit more, because maybe in the long run, we actually be saving money, because the private sector is decreasing, the amount of money is quite extortionate. Can't we really put money into these care homes? And is some areas got to have less capacity than other areas? You know, so I'm sorry, councillor, I don't, you know, if the people out there are shocked that I believe in caring for the most vulnerable in our society and reducing inequality is what politics should be about, then I'm sorry to the public.
Thank you. Councillor Jameson.
Thank you very much. I will address the Norwich Western Link issue, and if I have time, I will address Norse. If not, I know it crops up slightly later on in the day, and I can talk about it then. But perhaps it would help members to understand the process of the Norwich Western Link. Indeed, it's the process of any major infrastructure programme. Full council agreed this road as a priority, and so we worked up a strategic outline case, which was then submitted to government. Upon acceptance, we then produced an outline business case. This was also agreed by government. At that point, it is no longer our scheme. It is a government scheme. We are now an agent on behalf of the government, which is why the government funds the scheme. So we are delivering a government scheme, a scheme that the government supports as being the scheme considered to be the most appropriate. And therefore, it does not meet any accounting requirement for a definition of a provision. You may be lobbing barbs at me on this, but it's not where they land. They land full on. One five one officer, he has the legal obligation to opine on this, and he takes advice before doing so. There has to be a constructive obligation, i.e. we have indicated in some way that we might have to pay these funds, and we haven't, because we don't have to. We are still talking constructively with the DFT. If they want to stop the scheme, then that is a matter for them. They appreciate the logjam that is not of our making at all, and it is a government-sponsored scheme which the government will determine. So under those circumstances, there's simply no point at all in looking for a provision. Thank you. I'll deal with the Norse at a later, a later moment.
Thank you councillor Jameson. Councillor, just so that you're aware, right, after councillor Thomas, we're on to the three final councillors that have indicated, which is councillor Jeremy Price and Jones. Councillor Sands, I'm sorry, we missed you, I'll add you to that list. So if we go to councillor Thomas.
Thank you, Chair. I did smile when councillor Morphew said we have to be nice to the Labour government to get what Norfolk rightly deserves. Well, were the government nice to the Norfolk public when they removed the winter fuel allowance, put family farms under threat, and also said that it isn't more costly and complex to deliver services in a rural area? So guess what? We'll take away five point five million of rural services grant. So it does work both ways. I just wanted to pick up firstly on the Deirham Meeting Point funding, and just to clarify the situation there, we absolutely value the service that's provided by Deirham Meeting Point to the residents in the Deirham area, but day services are not normally grant funded in this way. We normally pay for placements made. We have discussed with Deirham Meeting Point how we might enable them to have more of those placements, and therefore more funding that way. But most importantly, we've initiated an open book process which assesses the required subsidy for the next financial year. This involves a detailed review of the organisation's financial situation, helps us to understand the gap between running costs and income, and we offer this approach to our providers who notify us of their financial difficulties. So this will help us to decide whether or not Norfolk County Council will continue to provide, and will need to provide a subsidy to close the gap. So I think it would be premature to say that we're going to fund for the entire year while we're going through that due diligence and working closely with them on their financial sustainability, but we would, of course, not expect them to have a cliff edge on the thirty first of March, so there will be some support available whilst those sensible, prudent financial conversations take place. So I just wanted to be absolutely clear about that. Just moving on very quickly, it's interesting that the Labour group say that the leaseholder, Evolution Trust, has the responsibility for dealing with all the things in Angel Road, and that they should be doing them, but the leaseholder, as in Norse Care, should have us paying for it. So I'm a bit confused, because there are two contrary views there. We're treating leaseholders differently. No, leaseholders have a responsibility to do what's in their lease. Just quickly going on to rough sleeping and the homelessness, I just wanted to say, just to give an example of figures, Norwich City Council have received an additional five hundred and thirty eight thousand this year for their homelessness prevention. They've received an additional forty eight thousand for rough sleeping, and this is on top of the recovery grant, which is two point two million, which has been divided across district authorities, and none of which comes to the county council, who lost the rural services grant of five point five million. So I think we can see there's a huge amount of investment going into supporting homelessness, and therefore it's appropriate that this council transfers the duty to those who hold the statutory responsibilities. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Thomas. Councillor Jeremy.
Thank you, chairman. Very pleased to speak in support of the Labour group's amendment, and there's two aspects I wanted to focus on. The first is, following on from councillor Thomas, actually, the Deirham Meeting Point. I think it's worth pointing out that even though it's called Deirham Meeting Point, it is actually a service for a much wider area. People from all over Norfolk attend, including from Swaffham and surrounding villages, and people have contacted me in another capacity to raise concerns about the possible implications of the budget decision. The problem with services like Deirham Meeting Point and so many similar services is the cost is always very clear, in this case, thirty thousand pounds, but the benefits are always so much harder to quantify. But if you look at the sheer numbers of people attending Deirham Meeting Point, if you look at their vulnerabilities, you don't need to prevent many people, frankly, from going to hospital to realise that actually that thirty thousand pounds is a huge investment and a wise use of money. We've got to move towards a better service around prevention, and Deirham Meeting Point services are key to that, in my opinion. So I'm very pleased to support the amendment, and actually pleased to hear the words from the cabinet member. Deirham Meeting Point are out the front of county hall today. I would encourage you to go and talk to them, and indeed, any member that wants to talk to them. The second aspect is the Norwich Western Link, and members will know that I've long been against the Norwich Western Link. I've spoken on a number of occasions about it, but I've always respected that there is a majority opinion in this council in support of it. The Conservative group are completely united in support of the Norwich Western Link, and a significant number of Lib Dems support it. That's democracy, and I've accepted that. But I'm not anti-road, but I am very nervous about, and always have been, against the environmental and financial risks associated with this road. I've respected particularly those... I've respected particularly those councillors who have, whilst supported the road and advocated for it, have also recognised the realities and the difficulties with actually achieving it and getting it built. Because, we need to be clear, achieving planning permission was always at all order, frankly, it was never highly likely, I would say, it was always a bit 50/50. The local contribution, the local financial contribution was always going to be a significant cost, there are risks of problems, overruns. I was on the Norwich Distributor Road Working Group that looked into the overspend, these projects are riddled with risks and uncertainty, and because of that risk, I was always quite nervous. From the outside looking in, there appears to be a policy over the last few years of building up a sort of unstoppable momentum in favour of the road. It's gonna happen, it's gonna happen. Flying in the face of reality, there's always been huge risks-
councillor Jeremy, your time's up, can you sum up please?
There's always been huge risks, and it's about time this council recognised that it's reached the end of the road, gets its finances in order, and works seriously on a Plan B for the traffic.
Thank you. I've got councillor Price, then councillor Jones.
Thank you, Chair. The Labour amendment addresses the financial risks associated with the Norwich Western Link, and I welcome that. The risk is too great to ignore, yet this Conservative administration has failed to set aside finances to mitigate it. This is reckless financial mismanagement, plain and simple. Councillor Jameson says that this council voted for the Western Link as a priority. Greens and others in this chamber did not vote to build in this financial liability, okay? People need to take responsibility for their decisions. We are looking at a worst-case scenario where £50 million of public money, our residents' money, could be dumped into a financial black hole. Why? Because this council has charged ahead with an environmentally damaging road without securing planning consent or guaranteed government funding for the costs incurred by this council. The administration has ignored its own risk register, which clearly states that this financial burden should be managed with the council's existing budget, and yet, where is the contingency plan? There isn't one. Instead, we face the prospect of a Section 114 notice, the council effectively declaring itself bankrupt, or a fire sale of public assets to cover the shortfall. This is the legacy of this administration's refusal to face reality. Councillor Plant says that partners need to help cover the costs, but it was he and his administration who went gung ho for this project, and now they need to take responsibility for the financial folly. The Labour amendment is sensible, it calls for an external review of the financial risks, a plan to seek government support if needed, and the setting aside of funds to offset this crisis. Instead of pouring money into a failing project, we should be investing in sustainable transport solutions, public transport, active travel, and tackling rat-running in our villages without creating a financial disaster. The council cannot continue to gamble with taxpayers' money, and so the prudent choice is to support this amendment and demand responsible financial management from the administration. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Price. I've got councillor Jones, then councillor Sands, then councillor Eagle, and then councillor Borat. councillor Jones.
Thanks very much, Chair. Reducing the amount of support given to homeless people is a false economy. Yes. Sorry. Can you hear me? Yeah, okay, thank you. Sorry, reducing the amount of support given to homeless people is a false economy. Financial and benefits advice, managing budgets and basic life skills all help people to take control of their lives and be valued members of our society. Reducing the severe weather emergency payment means that some homeless people will die if left out in the cold. Homeless prevention services, your proposal means that more people will be forced to seek temporary accommodation, there'll be longer waits in people going from hostels, and there'll be an increase in people in crisis. Your budget will drive people to despair and further burden the NHS and social care. If people freeze to death, I can only imagine there will be an increase in money needed for paupers' graves. Why are the difficult decisions you make always affecting the homeless and the disadvantaged? Believe me, this is far harder on them than it is on you. And it makes me despair when I hear people in this council saying, oh, it's not us, it's not us, it's districts now, like there's some sort of hot potato. It's up to all of us within our society to support the most vulnerable. I'm asking you, for pity's sake, don't do this, and please support our amendment.
Thank you councillor Jones. councillor Sands.
Thank you, Chair. I, of course, am speaking in support of the Labour amendment, I'm speaking on revenue for homelessness. The council budget for homelessness currently stands at £4.7 million. Proposed cuts to this aspect of the overall budget are £2 million. This represents over 42.55% of this budget, well on the way to half the budget for homelessness. Let's that sink in for a moment. £2 million or 42.55% of the allocated budget. This for amongst the most vulnerable across Norfolk, but I guess this is okay, as the people served in this sector already receive very little per person, and of course, they most likely didn't vote, and they expect to receive very little in any case. But just who did we help? 838 people accommodated in the council's homelessness service, and a further 309 people in young people's hostels, a total of 1,117. But this does not include those leaving care, or those who find themselves sofa-surfing, those out on the streets, or those facing imminent eviction. What of the single person forced to sell their home, realising little from its sale, but with a dependent with high needs? What of the veteran who, having served their country, comes to me as Armed Forces Champion, having been sofa-surfing or rough sleeping for the past two or more years? What am I going to tell these people when they seek help? How can any of the 84 councillors here look at anyone homeless or under threat of homelessness in the eye and say, we care so much that we cut the budget supporting you by 42.55% or £2 million? It gets worse. East of England homelessness is up by 20%. 44% in Norfolk of those already homeless have a degree of disability. 13.2% are recorded as having bad health or chronic illness. While it's reported by the Joseph Rowntree Foundation, 50% of families living in poverty include a disabled person. What happens if the household is receiving a work-related income? Circumstances change, and there is a cut to universal credit or other benefit cuts, even allowing for later upward adjustments. This can and does lead to debt, inability to pay rent and eviction. 78% of those who responded in the survey, and we can assume this to be a representative figure, were against the proposed cuts to homelessness. All of these figures from the county's own equality impact assessment. Solutions are way out of this predicament. £1.6 billion given by this government of district councils across Norfolk's Homes Prevention Grant was not predicated on the support in the existing budget, not making up for cuts. We do, however, have around £1 million found down the back of the county's sofa to spend on issues of four spends, though worthwhile, would simply be nice to have. We're not against this, but it would be better to take these to select committees to be better thought through.
councillor Sands, your time is up, can you sum up please? Thank you.
Yep. I am, of course, referring to the extra rural verge cut, the additional treatment of glyphosate, regeneration of high streets, and the additional hazardous waste days. Perhaps leaving the paint lids off in sheds would allow these to harden and be less hazardous, though no doubt a homeless person would like to have the option or problem of having to dispose of this excess paint, having painted their own home. We look forward to you supporting our amendment. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you councillor Sands. I have councillor Eagle, and then councillor Borat, and then I'm looking to go back to councillor Smith-Clare, who's reserved his right. councillor Eagle.
Thank you, Chair. I do hope I've misconstrued councillor Morfu's comments, but before I speak, perhaps I'd best off my forelock in the best condition of a Norfolk peasant. As some of you know, my great-grandfather was one of the first Labour councillors in Norfolk, and I'm proud to represent the area he covered. He lost out for his family economically and everything else because of what he stuck up and said, and I hopes councillor Morfu reflects on that in his area now, and allows other people to freely speak and say what they want. But first of all, I'll come to what I wanted to say. Last year, the Labour Government pulled our devolution deal, £20 million a year for our economic development. Thankfully, due to whether my charm or councillor Jameson's financial prudence, we salvaged one of those options there we wanted to help our high streets. I can do it, I have a belief that I can do it. I don't need to throw loads of money at it, it's actually just giving the confidence to those people in those high streets who are actually there, and someone's there for them. But now it comes to it that the Labour Group wants to pull that bit, where is the ambition? Where is the economic growth? You're not allowed to do it, and it's gone back, and I will call in at my great-grandfather's grave and mention this point.
Thank you councillor Eagle. councillor Borat.
Thank you, councillor, thank you, Chairman. It's quite interesting listening to this debate, and reflecting that there's none as deaf as those who won't listen. We've had endless persons speaking for this amendment who are reading their pre-prepared speeches that take no reflect of the information they've learnt as a result of the debate, i.e. the extra money going to the districts around homelessness, the money around the Norwich Western Link. So there have been very coherent and cogent arguments presented, which appear to have fallen on deaf ears, because listening to the speeches which I've just heard, there's no interaction or mention or acknowledgement of the altered information. And I'm, you know, that's sad, because it means we're not having debate, everybody's just saying what they think. I think that it's, one needs to just reflect a little bit, it was last time we were in this chamber that we heard the news that our Rural Services Grant was pulled by the government, which was over £5.5 million, and we had quite an innocuous motion to write to the minister to explain the struggle of delivering services across a sparse and large, a sparsely populated and large geography, which was not the case, obviously, in towns and cities like London and Manchester. And I have to reflect that not only did the Labour members disagree that we should write to the minister and ask for the money back, but they voted against, they didn't even abstain, they said, no, we mustn't write to the minister and ask for the money. And in terms of their budget amendment today, that £5.5 million is quite a substantial extra amount of money that they said they did not want to ask the government for. And then to complain that the budget is difficult to, it just, it seems very contrary to me, and there may be a logic to it, but it's not certainly one that I understand. On the Norwich Western Link, which is a road designed to reduce rat-running through villages, just in case the members opposite didn't realise, it's a road three miles long with £35 million worth of environmental mitigation. That's over £10 million a mile that has been built into this scheme, which the government has agreed to fund. The planning policy apparently was a bit iffy. Well, that's not true, because the planning application fit entirely with natural England's guidance, right up until the day that their response was due, and it was only after they changed the rules after the deadline for responding to us, that the road got into its current difficulties. So I would just reflect a bit on that. I don't think this amendment to the budget is supportable, and I won't be supporting it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you councillor Borat. councillor Rowan.
Thank you, Chair. I was prompted by councillor Borat complaining about people who have got a pre-prepared speech, so I thought I would come in, because I have something I would like to respond about what's been said in this debate. So we've heard several times that the housing support, we are transferring more than we're cutting from the second homes income, we are transferring this to the districts to support this. And it seems to me very unclear why, if we're actually, if we actually have that money available and could have kept it, we are transferring the responsibility and cutting the joined-up thinking between the care leavers and the housing support for them after leaving care by transferring them to the responsibility of the districts, and doing so particularly at a time when we are shortly going to have local government reorganisation. We could have kept that money, and we could have kept that responsibility, and ensured that our care leavers do have that support from us, joined up. Thanks.
Thank you councillor Rowan. councillor Vincent.
Thank you, Chairman. I wasn't going to speak, but I'm troubled about the debate about homeless people. Everyone in this chamber will know that I genuinely do care about this, and for the last two years, I have slept rough to support what the YMCA in Norfolk to raise funds for homeless young people. So let's not prejudge what people think, I do care, and I've proven that, and I will be doing it again. We have been told today that funds have gone to the district to support homeless people who have a statutory duty to support homeless people. I won't go much further than that, I am troubled by the lengthy debate in here by people who may perhaps care a little less than I do, because I have proven it. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Vincent. Councillors, all councillors that have expressed an interest in speaking in the debate have now actually been gone through, which means I will be going back to councillor Smith-Clare, who's the second, councillor, you have five minutes.
Thanks, Stuart. Good news for councillor Borat, this isn't pre-prepared, this is something that I've done as I've watched, so thanks, Bill, thumbs up. This amendment rightly acknowledges the importance and value of people, particularly in place in the most vulnerable over verges and perennial weeds, less a nod to artificial intelligence and more to good old-fashioned emotional practical intelligence. Housing support and homeless assistance is essential. Frameworks that protect the most vulnerable members of our communities are essential. And to cut these is quite frankly staggering, not just in terms of genuine, immediate and future need, but in terms of the impact this reduction and removal will have on individual lives, opportunities and long-term cost implications. We've discussed it, but Angel Road is a resource that's been left to deteriorate, and we have a solution. Solutions which, like our proposal to protect the homeless or care homes, isn't furtling, I think I heard that right, the word for the day, but it's proactive. Naturally, like many of us, I'm not hurt by political name-calling, but I am quite frankly hurt that genuine proposals aren't being accepted because they're red rather than blue. Yes, choices of cuts are always going to be contentious, we know that, but whatever spin you put on it, it's glaringly apparent that this administration doesn't share our fears or concerns on some of the most vulnerable members of our communities that our decisions have the greatest impact on. Yes, roads are essential infrastructure, but then so are the people that make up our communities. The most important components of any successful care in society, where there's a culture of passing the proverbial buck, then someone has to pick up the pieces, and it's not enough to accept that we will always leave that to be the case. And Fabian, you make a lovely story, and I do like it, so please never feel that you have to doff your cap to us, okay? But if you do doff your cap, can you please make sure there's enough pennies in that that can go round to help those that might be, you know, suffering at the moment? So, I don't want to make light of this, it is a serious matter, but when it comes down to it, I would like people to listen, consider, remove some of that political allegiance, and understand that this is a proposal or amendment that is there for the good of the community. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Smith-Clare. councillor Morfu, I'm over to you for the final response, and then- response. And then I've got the leader for her write of reply at the end before the vote. councillor Morphew.
Thank you, Chair. Well, however the vote goes today, none of these issues are going away. Just to deal with councillor Peck and I will, if it's coming up later on in another debate, then I will ask him to answer the questions. Yes, okay. So the care market's changing. We need larger rooms and en suite facilities. And the money in there in our budget amendment is totally insufficient. Why haven't you done something about it before? How much money will it cost? Where is it going to be debated within this council? councillor Carpenter, I'm delighted the work is being commissioned for an assessment on the site. You've told us for the last two years, you can't do any preparatory work because we've been asking that question in cabinet. So why hasn't that happened? Hopefully you'll get the opportunity to answer that at another time. And if you listen back, you will find where I found the money and how we backfill the capital programme, because I said that in what I said in the first instance. And we'll be very happy to work on helping get a better government allocation. And I can absolutely guarantee that Alice McDonald will be very happy to as well. councillor Plant, we've heard all the rhetoric. What we've got is a red risk, a red risk. And if councillor Jamieson is right, that it's not our scheme, what's it doing on our corporate risk register? And why is it a red risk if it's not our problem? It is our problem. We don't have a plan for dealing with it. All we're doing is talking to the government. And the weather forecast is for an inundation. So we need to fill the sandbags. And councillor Thomas, you draw a comparison between two entirely different leases. You really do need to have a look at them. The DFE lease is a standard lease for academy schools. And the relationship is between the academy and the DFE for what the academy do. The relationship with Norse is set out in the contract between Norse and the county council. And the relationship is also in a very different lease, but the relationship is between us and Norse. We own Norse. We are the county council. And this amendment seeks to get to the bottom of all of these significant issues. Vote against it if you will, but none of them are going away.
Thank you councillor Morphew. councillor Mason-Billig, I look to you for your write of reply.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm a bit disappointed here. This is all about choosing one set of residents over another. It's not about that. It's about balancing a budget and trying to be as fair as we possibly can and recognising the most vulnerable in our society that have to be a priority. I'm very surprised that we're not allowed to criticise the government in case they take offence. I don't remember the Labour group ever not criticising the previous government. I think they thought that that was their right. And I will carry on criticising the government if I think they're wrong. When I saw the minister and said that councillor Morphew said I should mind my Ps and Qs, he actually laughed. He is a politician. This is a political rhetoric and it's understood. However, I don't like his excuse of wriggling out of his promise for a better deal on devolution by turning around and saying it might because I wasn't polite enough to the minister. Actually, the funding formula for our devolution will be, it will be set in place for all councils who are in the same, who are in the same place. And it's not going to be reliant on how polite I am to Jim McMahon. This Conservative administration has got us on the devolution priority programme alongside Conservative Suffolk. And we've been mentioned by the Labour government in Parliament for our good work on this. So I don't think I've done too badly without you councillor Morphew. And I will continue to pursue this. Norwich Western Link, where councillor Morphew can actually help is to help the DFT to actually make up their mind. We know this road has not been cancelled. And the section 151 officer is absolutely doing his job. There is no accounting provision made because the strict accounting trigger point has not been met yet. And it won't be met unless the road gets cancelled. So we put it on our red risk register because we do it on behalf of a government scheme, but we actually haven't met that criteria yet. The Norse issues, I'm afraid councillor Morphew's read a very old contract but not applied the recent law because a lot of the stuff that's actually in here is irrelevant, wouldn't happen, doesn't, won't be applied. It's full of inaccuracies. You need to do your homework better and stop setting hairs running because a lot of this is very wrong. Norse is a commercial company. Covid has changed the landscape for residential care. I don't think we should just throw money at Norse with no business case provided. And that's what is in here. So the governance has been checked and it is robust, but we have to have mind commercial sensitivity. We know we don't have control over the Angel Road site. We're doing everything we possibly can to rectify that situation. And again, throwing money at it with no possible purpose is not going to solve the issue there. So thank you councillor Morphew for saying you want to help. But your lack of understanding about some very basic things makes me think that actually you may be more of a hindrance than a help.
Thank you councillor Mason-Billig. Councillors, I've had some advice from the monitoring officer. We've had one or two late arrivals. Guidance is that if you are not at or present at the start of a debate, i.e. this debate on this amendment, the guidance is you should not vote because you have not been here for the full duration. So could those councillors please bear that in mind when it comes to the voting? Of course, they can vote later on when we move on to other items, when they've been there for the full duration. But I just wanted to bring that to attention. As with all the budget votes, they are recorded. If we can have that on the screen, please. Councillors, be prepared to vote now. If you do have any problems with the system, please put your hand up so we can record your vote. Thank you. Thank you councillors. Those votes tally. We have for the amendment four twenty, abstentions of three and against forty. So that amendment is lost. I'll just let that scroll through on the screen. Just while that's going on, councillors, we have been going at this now, sitting for over two hours fifteen minutes. As I said, we'd choose a suitable point to take a refreshment bake. I believe now is the right time. Can I have us back at quarter to, sorry, ten to one, ten to one please, which gives us half an hour? Thank you.
Hey, can I confirm that we're back live? Right, good afternoon everyone, welcome to this continuation of Norfolk County Council's Budget Setting Meeting. Just to give an update on timings for councillors, we have, now we've started again, forty-six minutes left before we reach the three-hour mark. If we do have substantive business left about ten minutes before that, I will be looking for an hour's extension so that we can conclude and I will be putting that to the floor for a vote, so that's just so people know where we are. So, we are now at the stage where we are moving to the Green Group for their amendment and I believe councillor Rowett, you are putting that amendment forward, thank you.
Thank you Chair. The process of setting a county council budget gives us a window of insight into two things which we see clearly before us today, in both the substantive motion and the amendments from me and my opposition colleagues. First, it lays bare for all to see just how far the current Westminster government is committed to change and transformation or to rectifying the mistakes of decades of debilitating cuts by Conservative governments. In this case, disappointingly, it reveals no commitment whatever to transformative improvements for council funding this year, nor even to maintaining the same standard of service as last year. All we see so far is more underfunding, more taxes on work, more cruelty towards children in poverty, all persistently undercutting and sabotaging any increased spending we find to support vulnerable children and adults. All we see is more struggles for our hard-pressed officers tasked with finding a way to balance the books. And I want to say thank you particularly to the officers who've done the work with us. A continued cap on council tax rises, rising inequality, outdated valuations for council tax, frozen tax thresholds, no wonder everyone still feels under this Labour government that Britain is still broken and that our public services are on their knees. Let me add here my personal gratitude to the hard work of officers trying to deal with this situation. Second, the budget-setting project exposes just what kind of ambitions the current administration has for making do with this lamentable underfunding situation. Here, I'm in agreement with many of the criticisms we've heard from the Liberal Democrats and Labour groups, but I'd go further, because we need to be doing more than just shuffling deck chairs on the Titanic. I agree that some, such as the cut to housing-related support services, are short-sighted and will lead to additional pressures elsewhere, especially where they affect children leaving care. But there are also bigger gaps. Nothing in the administration's budget, nor in the amendments from other groups, reflects the biggest challenges that we face right now, especially in terms of the massive threats from climate breakdown and the emerging geopolitical crisis. Right now, we need a vision for how Norfolk could thrive and be better off, both materially and in emotional terms, in a world that is really not just business as usual. Norfolk needs targeted investment to deliver a genuinely transformative vision for a better, cleaner way of running our county, to prioritise investment in zero-carbon energy and the new green industries of the future, and deliver easier, more efficient ways of living in harmony with nature and with the vulnerable species and wildflowers for whom our countryside and our urban environments are also home. At the end of their calculations, the administration found an extra million pounds down the back of the sofa to invest in things that might make Norfolk a great place to be. Each group here has identified a little shopping list of things they would especially like to spend that extra million on, as a token of what they suppose a responsible council would focus on if we had sufficient resources. It's surely telling that the Conservatives chose for their part to add more poisoning of the weeds, more cutting of the grass, an empty promise to invest in our high streets with no indication of how you would do this, and a day collecting more hazardous waste. It's a shopping list for populists way out of touch with the real threats to Norfolk. Like the Labour and Liberal Democrat groups, we have a different shopping list from the Conservatives to make the best use of a million pounds from the scarce income of this council. Nothing in heaven or hell would entice us to spend it on carcinogenic herbicides that go under the description weed killer, with their devastating effects on both human health and on the survival of the small mammals and worms that feed on the seeds, leaves and roots of what we call weeds. Nothing would entice us to spend it on yet more cutting of the grass on verges.
Councillor Rowett, sorry to interrupt you. Councillors, can we have some decorum in the chamber please? We've held a good debate so far today with everyone being heard, I'd just like that to continue back after lunch, thank you. Councillor Rowett, please continue and I'll add some extra time on.
Thank you very much. Nothing would entice us to spend it on yet more cutting of the grass on verges, where a single cut is the best contribution to increasing the survival of wildflowers that have so helped with the recent recovery of bees and other crucial pollinating insects. Hazardous waste for sure needs to be correctly managed, but if we have a problem in that respect, let us call first for regulation to reduce the hazardous waste that's circulating in household settings, starting with the ending of the use of glyphosate and nicotinoids. For sure, we certainly agree that our high streets need some help, but there's ample research on what helps. To make a flourishing high street, first, we must make it easy for people to get there on foot, by bicycle or by bus, and second, we must ensure that they go there with money in their pockets to spend. So why not do just that? How can we deliver those things and simultaneously improve people's lives and deliver on our climate targets? Our ambition to move in that direction underpins our amendment. I'd now like to move our amendment, which proposes a more future-oriented agenda, using the limited leeway we have in spending priorities. So how can we revive our high streets and make a real difference to working people and businesses? One key solution is to invest effectively in reliable public transport that genuinely fits the needs of the people it's there to serve. Transport that genuinely helps people to do the things they want to do without having to own or use a private car, and thereby puts real money in their pockets. In rural and urban areas, Norfolk needs affordable buses so that young people on low wages or yet to find a job can afford to go for their job interview. We need buses that take us to work so we can accept the job if and when we get a job offer, or attend college if we've secured a place there. We need buses we can afford without draining most of the wage we earn that day. The shocking decision by our new Labour government to raise bus fares by fifty per cent from early this year was a low point in a story of low points since the general election. Day after day, we see with increasing clarity that Labour continues the practice of robbing the poor to feed the rich, and takes no real steps to end the poverty that so contributes to the strain on our council resources. But does increasing the bus fare even save money? A proper study to see whether reducing the fares to two pounds again would increase or decrease revenue, and whether it could help our buses run full and not empty, and our high streets buzzing and not deserted, this would be what we need. This is not just a matter of the immediate bus fare revenue, but also the broader costs of economic exclusion among those with no access to a car. These are potentially things that would be transformative if we had the resources to deliver them, and it may be that our new mayoral authority will come with some of those resources. Now is the time to make plans for what the ideal transport system would look like, to find out what people need and want, both to help them become economically independent and to reduce congestion on our roads and reduce our energy consumption for resilience in the face of global challenges and sanctions on oil, gas and nuclear fuel. According to the rankings, Norfolk does relatively well at providing what is called a minimum service level in buses, but we need to rethink what counts as an acceptable minimum service level. For it to make a difference to those who struggle to enter the workforce or escape isolation, we need to consider not just the elderly on free bus passes, but also young people going to school, those with disabilities and the residents of new housing estates in rural places who need transport to work every day, not twice a week or just at lunchtime. Anyone who, like me, cycled to County Hall this morning will have noticed what happens to the traffic when people aren't driving their children to school. We need to identify where people want to go and what time the bus needs to leave in the morning and return them in the evening. We shouldn't just make this up by guesswork or by whether a spare bus and driver are at a loose end and then wonder why the bus runs empty. Some villages in my division have no bus at all, and others, such as Dickleborough, have a fantastic hourly bus running right into the evening. Are they happy? No, because it goes to places they never asked to go, while the bus to the place they need to go, for the doctor, the local shops, the cafe, who'd be glad to have them, for that, their bus goes once a day and stays for less than an hour. Affordable and easy access to transport, reskilling for the jobs of the future, energy-efficient homes and renewable energy schemes for domestic and commercial premises, leafy tree-lined streets that are the lungs of the city during killer heatwaves, these are the ways to deliver not just a climate conscious but a better, cleaner and happier way of life for everyone. We have too few trees in this country. In the past, when the carbon in the atmosphere was kept even by a balance of human activity and natural sequestration, England was largely covered with ancient woodland. It's for us to maintain the tree cover we currently have. Tree planting schemes by major new roads have been shockingly mismanaged and wasteful, but equally our trees in urban areas are being lost faster than we can replace them. Saving these trees is a worthy use of what little funds we can find in the unspent allocation. Tree-lined streets are typically five degrees cooler in severe heatwaves, saving lives and hospital beds as our summer temperatures rise to dangerous levels. Sadly, we don't have funds to prepare fully for the future we face, but let's ensure that what little we have is spent wisely on things that will bear long-term fruit. Let's ensure we're ready with consultations and pilot schemes in place to show our new mayor that we know what would work and why it would work. We are on the verge of a very different world from the one we grew up in. It's not just that our public services are broken and inequality of wealth has spiralled out of control, it's also a world on the brink of chaos, torn by wars, ravaged by climate divas pastors, and with unprecedented movement of people displaced from areas where they can no longer live in peace or grow their crops. Our own crops are at risk from flood, drought, extreme heat, extreme cold and heavy rain, and our energy supplies are dependent upon countries that can't be trusted. We have become dependent upon digital information systems that are under threat of international cyber warfare and our nuclear power stations are sitting target for hostile drones. We need to rethink what it is to have a good life and we need to plan for resilience. Faced with all this, an extra dose of weed killer makes no sense. It is like adding a little more fuel to a fire that is already out of control. I therefore commend this amendment to this council.
Thank you councillor Rowett. Councillor Mason-Billig, do you accept that amendment?
No Chair, I don't, thank you.
Thank you. Is there a second of the amendment? I believe it's councillor Neil.
Yep, I'll second that, I've reserved my right.
Thank you councillor, which means we have a moved and seconded amendment, which means we now move to the debate of that. Please raise your hands if you wish to speak. I'll take those first three, I've got councillor Price, then councillor Kemp, then councillor Carpenter. Councillor Price.
Thank you Chair. The Green Group's budget amendment sets out a way that this council can better prioritise affordable, sustainable transport and cleaner air for our communities. Two key proposals in our amendment, the extension of the two-pound bus fare and the introduction of the AMPR cameras, are not just financial decisions, they're about fairness, opportunity and the future of our county. Let's start with the two-pound bus fare. This is about making travel affordable for the people of Norwich and Norfolk, especially those on lower incomes, students and key workers. Right now, if you live in Mile Cross, you need to get to the Norfolk and Norwich Hospital, you face a frustrating reality, paying for two separate bus journeys, one into the city centre and another out to the hospital. For someone needing to make this journey five days a week, the costs quickly become unmanageable. With a two-pound cap, the total amount spent would reduce significantly, keeping money in people's pockets, money that is desperately needed to go towards food, bills or rent. When transport is affordable, people can access work, education and healthcare without financial strain. It benefits individuals and the economy alike, keeping spending power in local businesses and ensuring employers can fill vital roles. And let us not forget the wider benefits. Encouraging bus travel reduces congestion and cuts air pollution, helping us move towards a cleaner, greener future. The more we invest in public transport, the less we will need to spend on costly road expansions that only encourage more cars onto our streets. The introduction of AMPR cameras is another Green proposal that supports our goal of cleaner, safer streets, particularly around schools. School streets should be safe spaces where children can walk and cycle without the dangers of excessive traffic. AMPR cameras allow us to enforce restrictions effectively, ensuring that cars do not endanger our youngest residents at drop-off and pick-up times. Cleaner air and safer streets should not be a privilege, they should be the standard. Many residents in Thorpe Hamlet have said to me that they really need to see these improvements. improvements before someone is seriously hurt or killed. By approving this amendment, we will be investing in people, in fairness and in a healthier future, and I urge you to support these changes, not just for the financial measures but as real practical steps to improve the daily lives of Norfolk's residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Price. I have Council Kemp, then Council Carpenter, then Council Adams. Council Kemp.
Thank you, Chair. Finding out what works in rural areas is particularly important, and sometimes not so rural. In Kings, close to King's Lynn, we've actually had an economic crisis created by the temporary suspension of the ferry. People who live in West Lynn and work in Lynn can't get to work on time, people without cars, people with, because the bus service isn't very reliable. It often doesn't stop, doesn't come through the village, it's run from spaulding. And yet, the ferry is more frequent, more reliable and quicker. There's more congestion now the ferry's not running. It's a place for, it's a way for getting people to places of work which is, which rural prosperity depends on. If you can't have people carried to places of work from settlements, they will fold, they will not be sustainable. So I think it's very, very important to improve rural transport and rural transport into towns. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Kemp. Council Carpenter.
Thank you, Chairman. Your AMPR cameras, which I do have a little bit of knowledge on in a previous life, you haven't actually said how many you are talking about here, but I, one of the most biggest areas in the country, we know, is London. And the Mayor of London Assembly, they have obviously integrated AMPR and camera units that are being installed in the western extension, cost approximately £7,000 per unit. The total operations and maintenance costs of these would be approximately £350,000 a month for 160 street sites, just under 700 cameras and the central processing hub site costs, and that was in 2006, I believe. You can look at it up yourselves. So I do wonder, particularly with the AMP, AMPR cameras, as to actually how this would work and the ongoing costs, because it's more than £500,000. So I don't quite know where you want to be placing these, but, you know, I don't think that's been built into this. So I do apologise, but I don't think it has. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Carpenter. Council Adams and then Council Long.
Okay, thank you. So I'm certainly sensitive to what the Greens are saying about glyphosate usage and targeted grass cutting, but I wanted to talk about the rural bus services. So if we were to compare economic inactivity in rural bus service, black spots on a map, you'd see quite, quite a lot of overlay there, they would look like quite similar maps. But, you know, some of the services are lacking, of course. You know, you look at bus services in places like Stalham and Holt, it shouldn't be taking an hour and a half to travel from principal towns like Holt and Stalham into the city, and it shouldn't be taking two hours to travel to Eastern College anymore. And I feel in opposition, in fact, to what the leader of the council said earlier on, that a city unitary on enlarged boundaries will help the future of transport for our entire county. Whilst I do have concerns about unitaries, certainly for the rest of the county and unintended consequences, Norwich looks like a unitary. But I don't see on-demand transport being feasible and an answer for places like Stalham and Melton Constable and other such locations. We need regularised direct services at the right times of day to support jobs and access to education for those places. So I can't support the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Adams. Council Long.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Unfortunately, I can't support the proposals either. A million pound for street trees, you know, how many trees? And I get that trees in cities look, look nice and have a function for the wildlife that inhabits within them, but residents can plant trees in their garden without the disruption to services and, you know, broadband connections, gas cables, sorry, gas pipes, electric cables and so on. And that money spent elsewhere on trees, which we've already delivered half a million of the million that we promised, you know, would be far, far better spent in terms of carbon reduction by doing masses of trees within divisions where there is the space for it. And case in point, and I'm pretty sceptical about the doom and devastation that we hear about all the time from, from the Greens, but within my division, 30,000 trees have been planted. They never cost a million pounds, 30,000 trees have been planted. In one scheme, or to be planted in one scheme, four and a half thousand in another scheme, so 34, 35,000 trees, for less than the price of doing a few trees in the centre of the city. And I mean, that really puts it into context. If you want to sequestrate carbon, don't plant three trees in a city, plant 300 trees out in a rural area where it can really, where they can thrive in soil where they're not competing with cables and wires and pipes and broadband and you name it, and give those very trees a chance of success. Now, buses. You know, in the 1950s and 60s, public decided that they didn't really want public transport. They chose to buy cars. Their own personal freedoms to travel where they want to travel, when they want to travel, to suit them was, was something that people went for. And as a result of that, numbers of, you know, railways that linked across this county were removed because people were making those journeys in a different way. And I get where they're coming from. Put, take everybody's personal car away, and if they've got a personal car, make sure they get an AMPR ticket every time they go out, so they don't want to do that either, and put them all on a bus. But the bus just doesn't leave people's houses at close proximity to get them to work at the exact time that their boss says they've got to be there. And I'm running out of time, but, you know, again, I believe in freedom, and that freedom is to be able to have a personal car where people have got the right to have one.
Thank you, Council Long. Council Storey.
Thank you, Chair. This morning and this afternoon, we've had these debates, and every debate has come up, we've mentioned the word, or somebody's mentioned the word, road verge cuttings. And if you go back, Chairman, the reason probably why that's been put to where it is in the budget this year, if you go back to the last growing season we had last year, for argument's sake, where it rained nearly every other day and it was warm the next day, and with that, grass and all sorts of herbage would grow up very fast and very tall. I come from a view, Chairman, as you well know, as a common sense point of view, and the fact is, if a road is dangerous because you can't see it come out of it, that isn't no good to anybody at all. That probably may cause accidents, and the last thing we want is probably a death on our hands because the grass verges wasn't cut, so especially at road junctions and places like that, we could have a vision when we came out of those junctions, burn on the side of safety. So, Chairman, I've got no harms at all in going for a road verge cutting of two to three times a year with the greatest respect, with that in mind, road safety. What I will also, Chairman, I've heard about pesticides, herbicides, all sorts of sites referred, to be fair. And we all sit here today, Chairman, if I may say, fortunately, on full stomachs, and we can do that because we can eat. And if you didn't have herbicides and resident things such as that, and the weeds took over, you wouldn't have anything to eat, Chairman. So a balance has to be struck at the end of the day, and where we're talking about, where we're talking about these herbicides, we are talking some of the kindest and safest on the recommendation list. We're not talking about other herbicides sometimes which has to be used on farmland to get rid of certain things. These are some of the safest. And may also take this opportunity, because farmers are not a very popular word at the moment with the government doing what they're doing, and probably, they'll probably come and realise that that's probably not the right decision to make, or may just go off a tangent. Just to say, Chairman, I think you'll find, if you look over the hedge rails into these fields, you will probably find nearly every field you see will have a six to a nine metre margin round that field, and in that is all habitat for wildlife, whereas that wasn't the case probably several years ago, but it is the case now. You will also have this word called rewilding taken place, provides all sorts of habitat. And I must say this, Chairman, and I must say this with experience and a little bit of knowledge, Chairman, farmers are the best conservationists of the countryside. If you just go look and just take note, you may, you may not agree, if I may go off a small tangent, Chairman, you may not agree with the shooting fraternity in this country we live in today. But I can tell you, all the cover they put down to encourage these birds, all the woods what are still there, a lot of those are for fates, but they're not up-
Council Storey. I'm sorry, you were out of time, but if you'd like to sum up, that would be good.
So am I, sorry, Chairman. I'll be quite, but the fact of the matter is, Chairman, road verge cutting needs to be done in the budget, I agree, probably could be done even more, and I must say, a lot of that verge cutting, Chairman, is done on road junctions by the farm and community.
Thank you, Council Storey. Councillors, I've had everyone who indicated to speak has spoken, which means I will now go back to councillor Neil as the second. Paul, you have five minutes.
Thank you, Chair. I think what I'm going to say will actually just knock the socks off councillor Long's theories, but... The council's ambition to plant a million trees in Norfolk has been a welcome addition to our nature rebalance, but has mainly been focused on quick, low-cost solutions of planting very small whips en masse in rural areas. The difference is, in urban areas where there is a concentration of air quality pollution generation, the council has not taken seriously the devastating effect that has been allowed to get worse and worse because dead trees are not being replaced anywhere near the level of loss. Successive governments, not just the last, have reduced the county's real-term budgets. So with the struggle to balance the figures, our highways tree replacement has been ignored, but that needs to be reversed. The facts are, the canopy cover from Forest Research recommends for England's towns and cities, I'm not just talking about Norwich, I'm talking about King's Lynn as well. It, yes, wait for it. It should be a minimum of 20%, but needs to increase to 25% canopy cover to address climate change. Now Norfolk's town and cities are shockingly below. For instance, Great Yarmouth only has 10.4% canopy cover. King's Lynn has a massive 12.8%, which is half what is needed. So don't tell me that it's okay. And Norwich with 18.6% canopy cover is still under the minimum and well short of climate change goals. The current level of funding for street trees replacement in my Norwich division is two per year, and without any more dying, it will take 58 years to clear the backlog. I don't think I'll be a councillor then. I might be providing something for the roots. Street trees provide so much more than a pleasant visual piece, as councillor Long seems to think it's all it is. They provide shade to keep rising temperatures down, mitigate against climate change, help to remove vehicle pollution, create oxygen and give habitats to wildlife, and things like improving people's mental health, and even add financial value to our residents' property. In an urban setting, it costs around £2,000 to replace and maintain a new street tree in an engineered surface, but those high costs would have been manageable if councils over the past 25 years had not kicked the issue into the long grass, pun intended. Now we have a massive backlog and keep ignoring it will only end up with no street trees left. Our amendment and proposal to ring-fence future unspent members' discretionary allowances for urban tree replacement will bring the missing tree level to a manageable number ongoing. The average division underspend since its conception is about £3 million, about £350,000 a year, and the underspend is mainly from the rural divisions who obviously can't find something to use their funds on. This is not asking for new funding, it's just asking for existing funding not to be absorbed in the general highways budget. We ask that you accept our amendments, as they will bring real benefits to Norfolk residents and the environment generally. Just to sort of pick up on a couple of points, welcome the response from councillor Adams. When we were talking about, you said that on-demand buses are not feasible, that might be the case, but that's why we're asking for a feasibility study, because we, it's better if we're going to redirect funding into public transport that we actually target it exactly the best way. And I think I've already stated to the honourable councillor over there that urban trees are not compatible with the rural settings. And somebody else from the Conservative group said, you know, we're always trying to ban cars, I don't know, I don't think we said that. We want to give people a reason not to have to use their car, not that they shouldn't. And I did welcome the words from the councillor on talking about herbicides. We were more specifically talking about weed killers, especially in engineered surfaces like pavements, and that is not necessary. I'm sure there are herbicides that are needed, but we need to be looking at everything, but we were mainly looking at weed killing on paths and highways.
Thank you, councillor Neil. councillor Rowett, you have the final response before I go back to the leader for a row of reply before the vote.
Thank you very much, and thank you for the points that people have made. In response about the cost of the cameras, cameras are actually a revenue generating system, and the, we already have cameras. The school streets that they would be policing reduce congestion and encourage walking and cycling to school, so they have a broader aim besides the actual revenue, that is to encourage healthy lives and also, as I mentioned before, much of the congestion that delays people getting to work is due to people taking their children to school by car, and if they can't get to the school by car, they're more likely to walk. So thank you to councillor Adams. I would specify that the on-demand service that we are thinking that we should investigate would be to supplement regular services and would not at all be a replacement for the desirable regular services, which is the point of what we were suggesting. Councillor Long seems to want to kill trees, we want to plant them, the point is that we are losing essential urban trees. People were told that cars would be freedom, now you have the freedom to get into a car and sit in a, in a traffic jam, or you can ride past on a bus in the bus lane and get there much more quickly. We're imprisoned by that foolish decision. It's like deciding to make water pipes out of lead. Sometimes we're told the wrong thing and we make the wrong decision. Enjoying the freedom of a traffic jam is not a good way forward. In response to councillor Storey, I think they already cut the verge around the junctions when they become unsafe. What's being proposed here is more cutting. Why would we need more cutting? Well, of course, one, one reason might be that there's more growth because of climate change and more water, but actually-
councillor Rowett, you're out of time, I do apologise.
Sorry, out of time, yes. Imagine managing the weeds in a more sustainable way. And thank you to the farmers also, because we do appreciate what they do in their field margins, it's not the end of it.
Thank you, councillor Rowett. councillor Mason-Billig, would you like to respond?
Thank you, Chairman. I'm not quite sure where geopolitical crisis came into the budget debate, but as usual, we are being asked to spread our wings and take on things that- we are being asked to spread our wings and take on things that are totally outside of our control, although we do our best to assist. This county council has a very strong and nationally recognised good reputation for its environmental concerns, and it will continue to carry on in that vein. We've introduced 70 electric buses in the city. We have a bus service improvement plan, which is helping to increase the bus services and the ability for people to catch those across the county. We've heard about weeds and grass and road safety. We have 6,000 miles of road. Last year we had a problem because of the growing season. We are determined that we're not going to get ourselves into that position again this year. And the hazardous waste, well, it's not just one day, it's going to be spread over a week. And unfortunately, it's fact of life that there is hazardous waste out there. Householders can't avoid it. Again, you're talking about government policy if you're going to change that. We're trying to help people, not trying to prevent them from dealing with that. High street in economic development, we've been there before. We want to keep people in our markets town so they can actually work there and they don't have to jump in their car and drive to Norwich or another urban centre. So it's a really good use of money to actually help those companies and those shops and other economic strategies. This is a real sort of motorists bashing amendment, I'm afraid. This is a rural county. We have to accept car use is necessary for many people, people with young families, older people, disabled people. Not everyone can jump on a bus or get on a bicycle, it just doesn't happen. A lot of these transport issues will actually come under the new mayor, who will get the funding as well. So hopefully we'll see some improvements. I remember the Green Group weren't very happy about supporting the Devo Priority Programme, but now they seem to think it's a good idea, so well done for that U-turn. We already have a flexi bus system, a service in the county, and we have a good relationship with bus providers, and we will continue to improve that where we can. And lastly, the section 151 officer has actually looked at the ANPR camera idea and has said that it's a very risky strategy because there's no guarantee it'll actually be successful or generate any income. So it's a non-starter really.
Thank you councillor. Right, we will now go to the vote on this amendment. Councillors, as always, please indicate if you have a problem with the voting system. Councillors, there, we appear to be one short. If everyone can just make sure that they've voted. Okay, the system has recorded all those votes. For the amendment was five abstentions, were nil, and against were 56 of that amendment is lost. Councillors, we are very rapidly approaching within, oh, could we just scroll that through while I'm talking, thank you. Councillors, we're rapidly approaching the point where we reach the three hour mark. As I previously indicated, I do intend to ask council to extend the meeting by one hour because we do have substantive budget items that we need to get through. Can I have a proposer for that extension? Thank you councillor Mackey, can I have a second? Councillor Dugan, can I please have a show of hands vote on that as to whether councillors are willing to extend? Thank you councillors, that's unanimous. councillor Kemp.
I would like to move my amendment, Chair. And the chair, the amendment is...
councillor Kemp, thank you for your enthusiasm moving us on, I've just got a couple of bits to do before I get to you. But we have extended the meeting, so we can do that. Right, the debate now returns to the substantive motion, which will be the cabinet recommendation by the leader of the council. The substantive motion is now open to all members to debate and to propose further amendments, provided the required notice had been given to democratic services, and they deliver a balanced budget and satisfy any legal requirements for consultation. There was one amendment that had been received in time, which was from councillor Kemp. So I invite the non-aligned member councillor Kemp to move her own budget amendment. Councillor, you have five minutes to speak.
Thank you, Chair. This amendment may be called Do Up The Care Homes And Keep The Lights On. In a budget, the most important thing is delivering growth and better services, but there's one great gaping hole at the heart of this. It's a proper strategy for refurbishing the whole Norse care home estate so that it may continue on for the benefit of all our residents. Why is this needed? Because Norfolk scores quite poorly for the quality of its care homes, except for Norse care homes which are the best. They are rated good or outstanding. It's difficult for the private sector, that's absolutely true, but fewer than 70% of Norfolk care homes are rated good. Therefore, we have a responsibility to continue what's best for our residents. Also, we have a statutory duty under the CARE Act to make sure there's good, quality, affordable care. If we don't invest in our care homes and issues happen, and heaven forbid, any had to close, we would deplete the care market and we shouldn't be doing that. We have invested in housing with care, it's true, but for people with high dependency needs and dementia, housing with care is not suitable, particularly as Norfolk County Council accepts no responsibility to provide meals in its housing with care establishments. What is really important is that our residents have the best at the end of their lives. Norfolk is a retirement area, it has a higher than normal proportion of older people, and it's going to have quite a great increase in people with dementia and substantial increase of 85 year olds and over in the coming years. This is why we must concentrate on social care, it is our core business. It is very, very important to make sure that the smaller care homes do not close. If this happens, Norfolk County Council will be charged, will be paying more to place people in local authority care homes, in private care homes that are more expensive, and also the public will be paying more to place relatives into care homes. And the quality of care will not always be as good. So these are the key issues. This is the second time you have the opportunity today to vote for Norfolk's care homes. Also, I've seen no evidence that there's been any study on the impact of closures on particular parts of the county should they happen, because there are places like West Norfolk, which are rural, which have long travelling distances, and as people get older, their relatives are going to be older, and maybe they can't drive a long car journey. There's already a shortage of good quality care homes in West Norfolk, and some people are having to look at place their relatives further afield, which is a tragedy for them and for the person who needs that support. Can you imagine being an older person and placed in somewhere which is a long way away from where you live? You won't have that support network that you need. This is a tragedy for you and a tragedy for the family. So I'm asking you to support this amendment today, and I'm also asking you to support King's Lynn. We've had various amendments today about places in Norwich and the Deerham Hub, which I've supported. But the estates, the very lifeblood of our local prosperity and economy in West Norfolk is about to be plunged in darkness by the Conservatives. They want to switch the streetlights off. Now, the point is this, people need to be encouraged to travel, to work by cycle and by walking for climate change, to reduce pollution and congestion. But if the streetlights are put off, this will make this impossible. There's also an issue of safety. We have Smiths The Bakers that have contacted us from the Hardwick, they have to start very early, and they worry for the safety of their staff if the lights go off. There are other people, and other parts of the estate as well, who are very, very concerned about this. The consultation was flawed in that it did not take account of any scoring system for particular locations, it was a blanket issue, and it will do a lot of harm to our county. If the lights go out, prosperity will be harmed and safety will be harmed. And the same is in the rural area of the Bawsey Dips, where a campaign many years ago, in a very, very serious accident, black spot, a death spot, had safety measures including the lights going on. And now, because those measures have been successful, some people wish to put them off, well, this is completely wrong. So I ask you to support Prosperity, I ask you to support West Norfolk, but most of all, our most elderly relatives and their residents who need good quality care homes into the future. This is something we must do because it's our responsibility. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Kemp. councillor Mason Billig, do you accept that amendment?
No, I don't accept it, Chairman, thank you.
Thank you. councillor Kemp, do you have a second for your amendment?
I just, Brenda Jones, thank you.
councillor Jones, thank you, you have three minutes. Do you want to speak now or reserve your right?
I'd like to reserve, thank you.
I now open that up to the debate, and I have councillor Long indicating he wishes to speak. Other councillors, please show your hands if you wish to. councillor Long, the floor's yours.
Thank you, Chairman. Hopefully it won't take too long. I get that councillor Kemp feels passionately that providing care homes should only be done by the public sector. The public sector hasn't moved with the times. And, you know, care homes that haven't been seen as being what people would want for their families have had to close. So she starts a campaign up, and she's a good campaigner, and I give her credit where it's due. I mean, anything that she can latch on to, to campaign about, I'll mention all the things she normally mentions, you know, King's in Ferry, Carnegie Library, parking spots outside shops that were reputed to be being taken away, that never were taken away and no intention of. Cost of care homes suddenly becoming more expensive. Actually, I think you'll find that some of the care packages are more expensive in the public sector than they are in the private sector. So, you know, you can't just say blanketly that we will pay more. And that's what's been saying in this amendment. But specifically, I want to talk about industrial estates and lights. And I get that business works at all times of the day and night, businesses on those estates are open, you know, and they have shift patterns where people are working 6 till 2, 2 till 10, 10 till 2 in the morning. So people are coming and going at all times. Streetlights are not the answer to these businesses' problems. Many years ago, they had the CCTV coverage, probably some of the finest in the country at the time, and businesses were asked if they wanted to particularly pay for it. They said, no, they weren't prepared to pay for it. It should just be funded by the public purse. And a lot of those cameras were switched off on some estates around King's Lynn, some were kept. And guess what? Those cameras can see in the dark. They can see in the dark better than a human can see in the dark, and any potential crime or so on, you know, can still be spotted by those cameras. So what difference will the streetlights make? Well, if you're walking to work at 2 in the morning, I suspect that will be a problem because you might have to carry a torch. In my village where I live, there are zero streetlights. Everybody carries a torch yet. And do you know what? You cannot go through the village without there being somebody walking a dog or, you know, and they've all got torches, and they all seem to manage perfectly safely and get where they're going. So, you know, if there needs to be money saved and we don't need to be burning energy, then some things have got to be cut. And I think streetlights on industrial estates where businesses have got the ability to put their own lighting in place is all that's needed. And as for the Bawsey bumps, of course, if that's your route home councillor Kemp, which it kind of is, then I see why you've got a problem with it. It's not in your division, but the speed limit was reduced as well. And I think it's the speed limit reduction on those dips that have had far more distance...
councillor Long, can you sum up your time?
Yeah, I will, thank you, Chairman. The speed reduction is the thing that's made the difference, not streetlights. Everybody that's going up and down there ought to be wearing high vis, carrying a torch or whatever.
Then councillor Long, I have councillor Jameson and councillor Thomas have indicated they wish to speak.
Thank you, Chair, I'll be very, very brief. The idea that we haven't commissioned a feasibility study when it's a matter of public record that the contract with Norse expires in 26 is very surprising. Of course, we have working up feasibility studies for both housing with care and residential care. There's a long term and comprehensive intelligence gathering going on at the moment, from initial meetings with stakeholders to scheme visits, the data that needs to be collected in order that the right decisions will be made. Some of this was subject to a pink paper, exempt paper in the November Cabinet. It's exempt because it is commercially sensitive. It's commercially sensitive both to Norse and, more importantly, to adult services here at Norfolk County Council, so that the private sector don't know too much about where we need sufficiency. So that feasibility study is already going ahead. I might just briefly touch on a couple of other things that were mentioned earlier on a long time ago now. But, you know, the idea that Norse would be buying properties for a pound is simply not the case. Obviously, things have moved a long way since 2011, and you certainly aren't able to pass things across below market value now, so that certainly wouldn't happen. £5 million just wouldn't scratch the sides in terms of a comprehensive redevelopment of our care homes, which is something which is, as I say, subject to a comprehensive feasibility plan. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Jameson, councillor Thomas.
Thank you. I just wanted to confirm that Norfolk County Council supports its entire care market, both those who provide care through Norse Care and our independent and private providers. And I'm afraid councillor Kemp, it's slightly incorrect of you to assert that care provided outside of Norse Care is more expensive. That is fundamentally not the case for all care homes. And it's also fundamentally not the case to suggest that only Norse Care provides good and outstanding care, because we have care providers across the county who are independent and private, who equally provide good and outstanding care. We still have a challenge in improving our overall care market. I cannot speak to this debate and not acknowledge that. And we work very closely with our care providers to help and support them to improve the care that they provide. You say in your proposal that the council doesn't accept a duty to provide food in housing with care. It's because it doesn't have a duty to provide food in housing with care. And the private provider that was doing so was not getting enough customers to enable them to continue their commercial activity. Effectively, they weren't selling enough meals to make it pay for itself. So regrettably, that is why that provision was removed by them, not by this council. But we have, of course, worked with the provider to ensure that we provide support for people and find other ways of them obtaining food supplies should they need it. And I can certainly say, my own dad buys some meals in from a company that he can then reheat in the microwave. So there are other opportunities for people to have food, and we're supporting all the people that were impacted by that to do so. So I wouldn't want to think anybody too outside to think that we don't ensure that our elderly people living in care provision don't have the opportunity to have a decent meal, because they most certainly do. I think that's probably all I need to say. But just to say that I was at a turf cutting ceremony in Hunt Stanton last autumn, and I'm very pleased to say that we're building new care facility there. So also, the assertion that we only do things in Yarmouth and Norwich is not correct. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Thomas, councillor Morpheus.
Thank you, Chair. And I'm pleased to hear some of the information that we are trying to get out is slowly dripping out, and maybe we'll get a bit more, and maybe we'll get some more when we get to the scrutiny committee in March. But it's the first time I've heard that there's a feasibility study... But first, I might add that there's a feasibility study going on. It'd be nice to know what the terms of reference of that feasibility study are, what the length of that's going to be, how it's going to be reported back into the system, how members are going to get a chance to be part of decisions that are made as a result of that. The one pound transfer, and I have to go back to something the leader said, ignoring the way that she said some of the things that she did. The one pound transfer, actually, I think I've got all the current contract documents that we have between Norse and the county council. And I haven't seen any variations in either the lease or the contract documents, which tells me that that one pound provision has gone. So I look forward to being updated with that, shown the documents, given the evidence, because I've no reason to think that councillor Jameson would in any sense wish to exaggerate the position to the council. And in terms of the governance, which hasn't been mentioned, I still haven't had an answer. So what happened to the liaison committee and what is the governance arrangements that go into that? And again, it will probably be one for the scrutiny committee for us to have a look at. I am pleased that councillor Peck contributed to the earlier debate. I'm disappointed he hasn't yet contributed to this debate and told us what totally insufficient meant and what would be sufficient to bring the care homes up to scratch and why nothing has been done about the larger rooms and the en suites in the ten years since we've known about it and the, how long? Eight years, nearly nine years since this administration has been in place.
Thank you councillor Morphy. Councillors, everyone who wished to speak indicating has now spoken. So I now turn back to councillor Jones, who reserved her right as the second. Councillor Jones, you have three minutes.
Thank you, I have nothing to add.
Thank you, which means we now go back to councillor Kemp for your final right.
Thank you, Chair. So we've had some points made by councillor Long about the cost of Norse Care. Well, looking at the prices, it seems that Norse Care does charge less to residents than a lot of the private care homes do. So that's something which I did some work on. But I'm not saying it should only be done by the public sector. I'm saying that there's increasing pressure on small care homes and other care homes and we need to make sure that there is sufficiency in the care market. It's also very important to make sure that we don't increase fatalities on the road. There are still fatalities sadly on the Bawsey Dips and there are young people and cyclists that do travel there, who are not easily visible. So the safety measures need to include keeping the streetlights on. Councillor Jameson talked about a feasibility study, but I've certainly heard nothing about the plans for all of the Norse Care homes. And councillor Thomas talked about housing with care and the provision of meals. The point I was making, that housing with care is not going to be suitable for people with dementia, particularly because they need a higher level of care and they do need meals. And councillor Morphy has talked about the issue of why. The refurbishment and upgrading of Norse Care homes hasn't been done in the last eight years. This should have been done because it's not business like council not to invest in your assets and services. So I will be asking for everybody to support this. And I'll be asking people to vote generously and with their conscience about it because services are important. This is our most vulnerable people and also about getting to work safely and on time and being able to travel through the county in a safe manner. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Kemp. Councillor Mason-Billig, as the mover of the original motion, you have now a right of reply.
Thank you. We've spoken about Norse several times. Norse is a commercial company and the care homes that they have, they are the leaseholder, so they are responsible for those. We have a block contract, an adult social care block contract with Norse. And we purchase care as a whole, but not all of those beds are filled. That's why it can be quite an expensive option. And we can't compel people to go into our care homes. People have the right to choose. And if they don't choose a care home for one reason or another, it's not necessarily because the care isn't good. It's quite often because there is another home that they find more attractive for some reason, perhaps because it has more modern facilities. And the majority of the Norse Care homes were built in a certain era. So although some have been transformed, and those are incredibly popular, the whole estate has not. And so that is why Norse, I believe, are looking at their care homes. But the study that we are undertaking is what do we need moving forward for our residents? What sort of care do they need and in which sort of places? And that is, again, commercially sensitive. Now, you've made lots of sweeping statements about care homes and most, you made them with passion and I appreciate that. But with little factual knowledge, I have to say. And you have been told this time and time again, and yet you still perpetuate this. The facts are the facts. You need to actually understand what those are so that we can move forward on this and work together on this. Streetlights, highways did safety considerations when we looked at the streetlights and those were all taken into account. If there is a particular problem, you can always ask your highways engineer to have another look at it. And I'm sure they'll be more than happy to review it and to come back to you on that. And with the fact of the industrial units, well, they can install their own lights. What they want to do is have us at the public purse expense to install things. We can't do that anymore. We don't have the money to do that. We don't put lights on modern housing estates. People put lights outside their own houses if they want them. That is the way of the world today because we have to concentrate our money on the most vulnerable of our residents. We can't always do everything.
Chair, I've got a point of personal explanation and clarity that's very important. I read out of the council papers, the public ones, small and medium providers are at risk and they tend to be cheaper. And this could increase the cost to residents and NCC if they're not there. So I did actually read this out of the council papers.
Thank you councillor Kemp. We will now move to a recorded vote on councillor Kemp's amendment. If we can have that on the screen, please, thank you. Councillors, as always, if you have a problem with a vote, please put your hand up so that we can come to you. Councillor Deegan.
Councillors, the numbers now tally, so the result is in. For the amendment is fifteen, abstentions are four and against are forty-one. So that amendment is lost. Can we just have that scrolled through on the screen?
Councillors, all of the submitted in time amendments have now been dealt with, which means we are moving to debate the substantive motion which was put forward early on this morning by councillor Mason-Billig. This morning councillor Jameson, who seconded the motion, reserved his right to speak. So I'll turn to him now. Councillor Jameson, you have sixteen minutes. Would you like to use them now or at a later time?
I'll use them now, Chair, if I may. So this morning, some time ago, Kay set out a clear, compelling and positive agenda for next year. Our priorities are stable and sustainable finances, well-delivered public services, economic growth and taking full advantages of the opportunities presented by devolution and local government reform. Overall, the net budget proposed by this council will rise next year from £528 million to nearly £572 million. £10 million of this additional funding comes from some of the districts deciding to apply a second home council tax premium and twenty-five percent of the county share of this additional income next year will be used to deal with increasing pressure from housing and homelessness. And this, together with the significant additional sums received by districts via the homelessness prevention grants and the recovery grant, some eight million in all, is our response to helping the districts deal with what is, after all, their statutory responsibility. So we're not passing the buck. Neither, though, are we bank of mum and dad. In the long term, I will work to achieve a far more cost-effective process via a streamlined local government. As can be seen in table four, we've applied an additional six million and three million respectively to address ongoing pressures in the Adults and Children's Services Department. And whilst that extra funding will help protect valued frontline services, we still face difficult decisions for the coming year and, more importantly, when looking ahead to ensure robust and balanced revenue budgets into the future. Local government reorganisation is extremely timely. If done in the most cost-effective and streamlined way, initial estimates save Norfolk at least £30 million a year. In addition, a well-designed devolution deal will bring in a further £30 million a year at least. So by becoming one of just six areas invited into the Devolution Priority Programme, Norfolk has the head start to achieve more game-changing additional funding for Norfolk residents. Whether there's any money left at all for those who hung back remains to be seen. We've had to deal with eye-watering increases. Growth pressures of £31 million economic inflationary costs, nearly £35 million linked to legislative requirements and nearly £15 million of demographic pressures. Including overspends, this adds up to £121 million of additional pressure to support our vital services in the coming year, and we've done that. We've had to deal with an in-year £16 million overspend, but inevitably, although we have achieved that, it reduces options in the future. It should be noted that the last three years of Conservative government had seen a significant reversal of the austerity settlement reductions, but not this year. This government has violently and unexpectedly redistributed funding from rural to urban areas. The total removal of the Rural Service Delivery and Services Grants represents a loss of £6.5 million to Norfolk residents. And that loss has not been compensated by the new deprivation-based recovery grant. We received none of the £600 million made available nationally and this was despite the fact that five of Norfolk's seven districts received a proportion of that grant. Most of the grant is going to metropolitan authorities. The recovery grant, it should be noted, does not consider the aging population and additional demands that demographic changes place on services. In Norfolk, over a quarter of the population is aged sixty-five plus, compared with less than twenty percent of the urban population. Norfolk saw a 5.27% increase in core spending power. However, £32.8 million of that, or two-thirds, comes from local tax increases. And without that, Norfolk receives an increase of just two-thirds the rate of inflation, a real term fall. Additionally, Norfolk has been hit hard by both the rise in the national living wage and the increase in the employers' national insurance. The impact on care providers in particular from the NI increase is a huge additional pressure in the care market. This pales to insignificance compared to the failure of successive governments to address the dedicated schools grant deficit and adult social care reform. The timescales for the latter are extremely unclear and in the meantime will require government to shore up the system. The DSG is an existential problem for councils across the country. Norfolk's children's services are, through local first inclusion, at the forefront of trying to find ways for the Department of Education to resolve this issue. Because this is not an issue of our making. The DSG is a ring-fenced specific grant that we are responsible for distributing, money in, money out. It is clearly a national problem and in the short term, the government needs to confirm that the maintenance of the statutory override, which allows local authorities to run these deficits off balance sheet, will continue. Longer term, the government has to listen to pioneering local authorities such as Norfolk and introduce key changes to the 2014 Care Act so that SEND funding is at least sustainable on an annual basis. Because Norfolk is once again being targeted for its relative fiscal responsibility by receiving far less per capita SEND funding than other councils. I've seen a recent IFS report which revealed that in 2324, London spends £6,000 more per head than the east of England. And if you multiply that figure by the number of children in Norfolk with an EHCP, there would be no deficit at all. Neither would we have the associated £7 million per year cost of funding that deficit. And this, of course, excludes the additional costs of getting children to school, particularly those with an EHCP, far higher per capita than in London. So we have no resolution to adult social care, no resolution to FARA funding, no resolution to DSG, less money for rural authorities. The government promised not to put up taxes for working people, but they have left it to local government to do it for them. The 4.99% increase to council tax that I and virtually all other upper care councils are forced to announce is a direct tax on working people because of conscious actions by this government. But we can make the necessary savings, requiring, of course, that 4.99% increase in council tax, which, in case you thought there was any real choice, is included within government funding assumptions. Full details of that council tax are set out in table one of your briefing from the Director of Strategic Finance. So we have maintained and will continue to develop our key demand-driven departments to help the most vulnerable in Norfolk. But we will also continue the work of growing the economy and infrastructure is key. If a modern economy needs secure, clean and affordable energy, which we facilitate at Yarmouth and enable in the Southern North Sea, it also needs good roads, rail, broadband and 5G infrastructure. Such connections allow wealth and opportunity to spread, which is why infrastructure remains our key growth priority. But higher borrowing costs cannot be ignored and we will be containing overall capital borrowing within a £50 million envelope. It is why in-depth plans are being developed for the modernisation, for example, of the Norse Care Estate, rather than spending ad hoc sums on ad hoc sites. But meanwhile, remember that not only have we committed to maintaining all of our forty-seven libraries around the county, we continue with the development of these facilities in the heart of the community as part of major urban regeneration projects in Great Yarmouth and in King's Lynn, for example. We're investing in museums. Norwich Castle Keep is due to open soon and it's a huge heritage boost for Norfolk. We've invested £45.8 million in housing with care villages across the county, currently focused in Huntstanton and Kettlewell, with new schemes to be announced shortly. Nowadays, people tell us they want their own front door, independence with the highest quality care in the background. And we have continued to see the rollout of fibre network across rural Norfolk. We've invested in SEND schools, mainstream schools and special resource bases to help Norfolk's young people bridge the attainment gap with the rest of the country. Investing in physical infrastructure so that our people can get to work and get home again quickly and cheaply. Businesses can get their goods out of the county and get their investments into it. Better paid jobs requires growth and economic development is the way to ensure that Norfolk sees more of it. We will wait for the government to decide, of course, how it wants to proceed with the Norwich Western Link. But meanwhile, we're building out roads such as the Long Stratton Bypass to be followed, I am sure, by the West Winch Bypass too. That is a project which will unlock one of the largest economic drivers in East Anglia. In addition, we'll continue to develop and maintain our transport network. £275 million we're spending on maintenance, £17 million on road safety, £18 million on public transport. We've supported our key industries such as the operations and maintenance facility in Great Yarmouth, the business development hubs in Norwich Research Park, Hethel, Scotto or our in-house builder Repton Homes. The deadlock surrounding the Western Link, which the demand for transport wants, spells defra stalling. defra stalls it, is a clear example of the regulatory blockage that a reformed local government could help solve. Over the last fifty years, local responsibilities have been cut with decisions contracted out to unelected quangos with no political oversight or any ability to overrule them. This cannot continue, and we should be wary of creating any new quangos under LGR. So despite the stark financial landscape, we continue to protect and develop vital services because that is what well-run Conservative administrations do. But at forty-two million pounds, the forecast twenty-six twenty-seven gap remains daunting, particularly if government continues the direction of travel set in twenty-five twenty-six with further redirection of funding away from areas like Norfolk. This is why I will continue to stress the importance of making sustainable savings, not, as we've heard from the opposition, one-off populist gestures or measures that merely kick hard decisions a year down the road. As I said, we are on the verge of transformational change to the local government landscape, and this creates an opportunity for the whole public sector, not just local authorities. And whilst dizzyingly complex the details might be, the overarching strategic objective is very, very simple: what is best for your residents, for the people, communities and businesses of Norfolk? If you want a structure that does not deliver the maximum savings, the tens of millions of pounds a year, you must justify that structure to your residents. If you want a structure that does not deliver the greatest administrative efficiencies for social care, for children's services, send, housing delivery, homelessness and public safety, then you must justify that to your residents. If you choose to make transformation harder than it need be, costing many millions of pounds to disaggregate and reconstruct, you must justify that cost in both money and welfare to your residents. If you do not ensure democratic oversight and neighbourhood empowerment, you will be held accountable by your residents. We must ensure a new landscape offers the most value for money with the most efficient service. We have the chance to be far more streamlined, far less costly. And if done right, a new system supporting a new strategic authority will deliver tens of millions of additional investment and save tens of millions in the delivery of services. Done wrong, by putting politics before our people, our residents will not forgive us. For the coming year, then, I can present a budget to the council chamber that is not only robust. This financial platform will allow the council to deliver a very clear vision. It's a budget based on the future to enable the council to step up to the central role of delivering the Devolution Priority Programme, one for Norfolk and Suffolk, whilst at the same time, we're still able to deliver an additional sixty million. We're not making cuts, an additional sixty million spending on adult services. It is the county that will transform the delivery of social care. There's growth of thirty-two million within the children's budget. It is the county that is leading national transformational programmes. And despite continued relentless increased demand from those two services, we are still able to spend an additional eight million on infrastructure and on the environment, and over three million on our excellent fire service. And specifically, as raised by opposition, we have listened to residents' concerns because that's what we do. A further three-quarter of a million pounds to improve our environmental services. Road sides to receive an additional cut, another weed reduction programme countywide, and an additional week for residents to dispose of hazardous waste products. And in addition, in the face of the opposition's disdain for the people who make Norfolk tick day in, day out, we are setting aside two hundred and fifty thousand pounds to build on the county's successful market towns projects, bringing funding, advice and technology to our small businesses across Norfolk. No other organisation brings people together to support communities at scale to deliver for Norfolk. So I'd like to finally join with the leader in thanking the county council staff for their dedication and hard work in supporting communities and in highlighting the council's core role at the centre of this county. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Jameson. Right, I'm going to open it up to debate now. Councillors, can I remind you, you have three minutes each. I have councillor Watkins, sorry, councillor Collett, councillor Watkins and councillor Price already. Anyone else, please show your hands if you wish to speak. I'll start with councillor Collett.
Thank you, Chair. The leader's opening remarks about Norwich perhaps illustrates what's driving some of these budget decisions which disproportionately impact on Norwich residents. Town close constituents will be hit hard by this political hostility. One of our key responsibilities as councillors at Budget Council is to closely consider the consultation responses and equality impact assessments, so that will be my focus. My biggest concern is the two million cut to homelessness and housing support. I want to challenge the attempt at rewriting history I've heard in the debates so far. Let's not forget that this cut is on top of that budget being slashed by the Tory administration in twenty seventeen from ten to four point five million. So councillor Wymark's comments about overall money available for homelessness prevention, perhaps inadvertently, fail to acknowledge this wider context. Even with the eight million he says is available across the county for the district councils, that is still two million less than the ten million total they received from the county council up till twenty seventeen. So in fact, an eighty per cent reduction in the county contribution compared to eight years ago. When you take into account rising demand on these services over those eight years due to the impact of austerity policies and the additional costs thanks to Truss's catastrophic budget, the real terms cut for these services is stark. The impact of those original twenty seventeen cuts have been felt in town close and beyond. Sheltered housing complexes, where we previously had no issues at all, have been blighted by criminal exploitation and coercion, with vulnerable adults being cuckooed and financially exploited. This has proven to be such a false economy with the increased cost of safeguarding referrals, multi-agency reviews, repeat police attendance and the impact on residents' lives and mental health. It's simply shifted cost and impact onto individual lives and other services, including those that this council runs. The proposals before us will amplify both that false economy and either shunt costs onto costlier services or kill people. From an equality point of view, our own equality impact assessment demonstrates this cut will disproportionately impact on young people. I can't see in the papers how many of these three hundred and nine young people who were supported by this service are young people that each one of us in this council chamber has a corporate parental responsibility for. So perhaps the leader can clarify how many care-experienced young people that we have a responsibility for will be impacted by this cut. The hundred and twenty thousand cut cited to the excellent and essential Pathways Team provides street outreach to those who are ruthless, a scheme that is run by skilled workers including registered nurses who can assess and treat both physical and mental health problems. There is surely no greater public health intervention that this kind of direct outreach provides, so I don't understand why the Public Health Grant can't be used to support this. I can't support this budget that singles out those who have the least and are already leading the hardest lives in our communities and the skilled and compassionate professionals who support them. It's inhumane, widens inequality and is such a blatantly obvious false economy, it doesn't even make financial sense. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Collett. Councillors, councillor Watkins and councillor Morphew, I've had advice from the Monitoring Officer that you spoke earlier on on the substantive where you, even though you moved your motions. So the advice I've been given is there's precedent that you can't speak at this point.
Mr Chairman, I thought we had a chance of then again speaking on the substantive motion later on. We were proposing our group's amendments earlier. This is now the substantive motion. I think we're allowed to speak.
That's what we were told before.
Thank you, thank you for your response to that. In order to move the meeting forward and to give you the right to speak, we are content for you to actually speak at this moment. Councillor Rowett, that was different to the advice that you were given. I do apologise for that. It means that you can actually speak in this part of the debate if you would so like. So we have councillor Watkins, councillor Price, councillor Morphew and then councillor Borat indicated. Any other hands, please, would be appreciated. So councillor Watkins.
Thank you very much, Mr Chairman. I wasn't planning to speak again, but I can't let councillor Jameson get away with painting such a rosy picture of the situation here at Norfolk County Council. The reality is that this is a budget of a tired and desperate Conservative administration that is breathing a huge sigh of relief that it will not have to face the likely wrath of Norfolk's voters in May. Not only will it now escape judgement on four years of questionable competence, but it will continue to inflict its policies on an unwilling electorate for at least another year, if not two or three. Democracy has been given a bad name. Granted, there are no easy choices before us, and sometimes making the tough decisions are unavoidable. But today's offering provides little to suggest that the people of Norfolk can have any confidence in the Tories' ability to turn things around. Realistically, this administration is pinning its hopes of salvation on a white knight riding over the hill to the rescue, and that seems highly unlikely in the current uncertain economic climate. The Conservatives have been too slow to kick-start the engine of economic growth, seize the opportunities presented by green technologies and attract much-needed inward investment to the county. If the administration is to fully take advantage of the opportunities opened up by devolution, it has to show the leadership necessary to shape the future of the county in the years ahead. Hand in hand with that is the need to significantly improve the county's infrastructure to make it modern and fit for purpose. Good news about Long Stratton, of course, and the two new A47 schemes, but it's taken ages. This administration has been stuck in the slow lane for too long, and I'm not just talking about the snails on the Aicle Strait. There has been some notable progress, yes, with the environment and climate change, but it is disappointing that there's been a dumbing down on the administration's commitment and support for low-carbon development in Norfolk. It also needs to shout louder to secure the vital funding needed by rural and coastal communities who face the ever-growing threat of surface flooding and coastal erosion. Children's services remain under immense pressure despite the welcome improvement in performance in recent times. The size of the task to provide suitable provision for the anticipated extra SEM places will be enormous, as will the urgent need to support children being left behind educationally at risk of domestic abuse and mental health concerns. And finally, and most importantly, Lib Dems judge a council by how the services it provides affects the opportunities and freedoms for the least advantaged in our society. Frankly, the Conservative record leaves a lot to be desired. When there has been a need for strong leadership, the Conservatives have often shown indifference and a lack of compassion.
Councillor Watkins, if you can conclude, please.
Norfolk deserves better. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
And councillor Watkins, councillor Price.
Thank you, Chair. Today we are asked to consider a budget that once again asks Norfolk residents to pay more for less. The Conservative administration proposes a four point nine nine per cent council tax rise, including a two per cent adult social care precept, generating twenty-six point six million in additional revenue. Yet, at the same time, we see cuts to essential services, a funding shortfall of thirty million pounds and an overall reliance on one-off savings from reserves that will leave us vulnerable in future years. Let us be clear, the root of this crisis is the failure of central government to provide fair funding for local authorities. Norfolk has been hit particularly hard over the years, but none more so than this year by the new Labour government, losing five point four million from the abolition of the Rural Services Delivery Grant and receiving nothing from the new six hundred million recovery grant. Two-thirds of the council's spending power now comes from council tax, placing an unfair burden on residents while Whitehall shifts the responsibility for funding essential services onto local taxpayers. This is unsustainable. People can't afford further increases in council tax. This can't go on. You know, the people have got no more money to give. It has to come back and it has to come from central government. This budget claims to prioritise the most vulnerable, but the reality is stark. Cuts to the social care grants, including a fifteen point seven million reduction to the social care grant and the two point six million less in children's social care prevention funding, will leave our most at-risk residents without vital support. We cannot allow short-term accounting to dictate long-term suffering. This budget is not inevitable. It is a political choice, a choice to continue austerity or to demand systemic change. Green politics is about transforming local government funding so that councils are not forced into a cycle of cuts, but instead receive sustainable funding based on real community needs. We must push for a fairer financial settlement that does not rely disproportionately on council tax, which unfairly impacts lower-income households, but instead ensures a redistribution of national resources to local government where it is needed most. Moreover, this is a moment to recognise that economic resilience and environmental responsibility go hand in hand. Investing in green infrastructure, restoring nature and prioritising sustainable transport are not luxuries, they are fundamental to the long-term prosperity of Norfolk. A budget that neglects the environment is a budget that fails to prepare for the future. We must challenge a system that prioritises short-term financial targets over long-term wellbeing. I urge this administration to get serious by calling on the old establishment parties for a fairer funding model that is based on a fairer tax system, so in the future we can set a budget that truly reflects the needs of Norfolk's residents and environment. Only through systemic tax reform can we secure a future that is both socially just and environmentally sustainable. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, councillors. We have ten minutes till the scheduled end of the meeting. I'm going to go to councillor Morphew next, and then I will be looking to councillor Mason-Billing to have a response unless there are councillors that are willing for us to extend the meeting. Councillor Borat.
As I have yet to be allowed to speak on the substantive, you are proposing that councillor Morphew should be allowed to speak twice, and I shouldn't be allowed to not speak at all under what you're proposing, which I think is manifestly unfair.
Councillor Borat, I have given the determination that councillor Morphew is entitled to speak. His hand was up before yours, and we've now agreed that with the Monitoring Officer. We have got the option of extending the meeting to conclude this business, and I'll be putting that to the floor. So I'll go to councillor Morphew. I was just giving an indication to council what my intention was likely to be. But as you have said that, I will put the vote for an extension before the time concludes. But councillor Morphew, you have your three minutes.
Thank you, Chair. I'll try not to take it all. There are a number of things, interestingly enough, we would agree on, and probably we would agree more outside this meeting than we would agree in the meeting. But for example, there is no question that one way or another there needs to be more money put into local government. And we would also probably agree that that money needs to come from somewhere sensible, not be made up, and we do need economic growth to generate the funds which come into local government to pay for public services. So I've got a feeling that whilst we may come at it in from different directions, then we would probably reach a similar sort of conclusion. We also, I think, agree that we need better structures. I think we need more fundamental transformations. I think we've had the argument before that the transformations that you have been offering us as an administration have been far too superficial and they need to be much more fundamental. And I think I would struggle with you claiming that a lot of the major issues that you have been dealing with have been managed properly. I don't think they have, and I think we've illustrated today a number of critical incidents, instances where that is not happening in the way it should be. And as a consequence of that, we can't support this budget in its current form because frankly I don't think it works. And I think when we do get to the next phase, and no matter how rude the leader wishes to be about me, we will be looking to try and work to come with a solution which is the right one for the county, the people of the county, despite some of the language which gets used by some people. And I think it's very important that we do come up with a devolution solution which does generate the economic activity that we need here and the structures that we absolutely need here, and something that we can take the county with us, and that's not just the urban... And that's not just the urban bits or the rural bits. That's the businesses, that's the entrepreneurs, that's everybody. Other public services, the third sector, everybody who's got a stake, who's got, to find a phrase, skin in the game to make sure that we get there to do that. And that will take us into local government reorganisation, where if we're not careful, people will look and see what's been going on today and listening to councillor Jameson and listening to him explaining some of the good stuff that he's done, but also defending the indefensible. And I think that's going to give us a real problem. So we will be voting against the budget today, but trying to exploit the opportunities to do the things together in the interest of the county that we can manage to do with all parties. Because there is a bigger prize at stake here, a real big, once-in-a-generation prize at stake here that we can all do for the county, for the country. And if we're stupid enough to miss this opportunity, you know, it won't come again.
Thank you, councillor Morphew. Councillors, we are rapidly approaching the extension that we've been given. Taking councillor Barrett's point, I am loath to stop the debate at this very late stage when we only have one or two councillors left that have indicated that they wish to speak on the substantive budget. So what I would ask council to support is a 15-minute extension, just so that we can conclude this business with the speakers that have already spoken. Do I have a proposer for that 15 minutes? Councillor Mason-Billing, do I have a second? Thank you, councillor Gurney. Can we take that to the vote, please, 15 minutes? The numbers are that that's passed, so we will be extending the meeting by 15 minutes if necessary. Councillor Barrett, thank you for waiting patiently. The floor is yours.
Well, that's extremely embarrassing because I've no wish to extend the pain and suffering of all of the members as a result of this debate. And I didn't support the extension. But as we're here, I will say a couple of things. 85% of county and rural unitaries say that they're in a worse position financially than before the government's budget in the autumn. The national insurance costs are far higher than any money that central government, that the Labour government gave to the authorities to cover the increase in the national insurance costs. £100 million of Rural Services Grant was removed from all of these councils. And most iniquitous is that an assumption of the maximum possible council tax that you could set is included in the government figures of how much money the rural unitaries and county councils have to spend. Even though we haven't actually set the council tax yet, the full amount of that is included in the figures available from the Labour government. So when they say they're interested in devolution and local decision-making, it appears to me that they are talking, their actions are entirely opposite. They want us to have a new mayor. The mayoral precept will add to your council tax, and that in Cambridgeshire, for the Cambridgeshire mayoral precept, went up by 300% within a year of the mayoral the new mayoral strategic authority being established. So for the current government to say that they're not going to put up taxes on working people, well, who else pays council tax other than working people? I have to commend this budget. You know, the act that we're having to do more with less is something that has been very ably demonstrated here. We should be very proud of Norfolk County Council and all it's able to do, especially as it's trying to be strangled by the current Labour government. And for the parties opposite not to support this budget would demonstrate to me that they are manifestly not interested in helping the poor and vulnerable in Norfolk. So I will be supporting this budget.
Thank you, councillor Barrett. Councillors, all of the councillors that had indicated they wished to speak have now spoken. The second has spoken her reserved right, which now means that I turn to the leader for her right as the person that proposed the motion to sum up. Councillor Mason-Billing.
Thank you, Chairman. I thought this was supposed to be about a county council budget, but we seem to have heard that a city council budget as well. And I would like to suggest that perhaps if the city council spent less on revamping their marketplace and using consultants, they might have more to spend on their core services. But let's talk about the county budget. We've heard, we know what a tired and desperate council looks like. You've only got to look at Lib Dem one. We've already spoken about that. I'm not going to go there again. And in terms of things like flooding, we are the council that had a large flooding conference here. And we brought together all the main movers and shakers and stakeholders to actually try and do something positive for our county. You're right, councillor Price, the central government doesn't provide fair funding. This government is worse than any of us could have possibly imagined. And talking about indefensible, that is what's indefensible, councillor Morphew. We have to cut our cloth accordingly. And I'm very, very pleased to hear that you are going to have an open mind in terms of a county-wide solution for local government reform. So we've had a very long debate and I thank you all for your indulgence today. When you've got a turnover of nearly £2 billion, it seems like an awful lot of money to spend. But that's until you understand how many people we have to look after and the complexities of the services that we deliver. So people may think that having passed a budget, we can breathe a sigh of relief. But unfortunately, it doesn't work like that. We have to continue to monitor our spending against our budget and regroup and start to formulate the budget for the following year. And on top of this, we've got to work towards devolution and local government reform to build a better Norfolk that's fit for the future. And the work towards that has already started. So thank you all today. I hope that you will feel that you can support this budget. And it'd be very disappointing, considering the very few amendments we've had, if the majority of this chamber can't support it.
Thank you, councillor. Council, we will now move to the vote on this substantive motion. Just while that's been put up on the screen again. Please indicate if you have any problems with the voting system. Councillors, I haven't concluded the meeting yet. Can we please stop moving around the chamber until the meeting's been concluded? Thank you. Councillors, all votes are in. Four is 41, abstentions is nil, against is 17, which means that that motion is carried. That brings us on to item six on the agenda, which is questions received under Rule 9.3. There were no questions received. Councillors, thank you for your attending today and all of your contributions. And officers, thank you for support. That concludes the meeting.